Okay. We're going to call this meeting to order of the Bellingham City Council for July 21st, 2014. The next two Bellingham City Council meetings will take place on August 4th and August 11th, and then council will be in recess until September 8th. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Teri Borneman.
Here.
Jean Knutson.
Here.
Kathy Lehman.
Here.
Michael Illiquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start this evening with our 15 minute public comment period. This evening, we're going to experiment with something new because we have three public hearings. It's actually not an experiment with something new, it's bringing back something old. Since we have three public hearings this evening, we're going to do public comment for 15 minutes, get as far as we can through the list, and then stop public comment period, move into the three public hearings for all the people who are here to speak in the public hearings, and as soon as those are completed, we will then reopen public comment period and finish up whatever's left. So, I'm going to start with anything on here that appears to have something to do with tonight's agenda. And so, that looks like a railroad letter from Vincea Bichounas. Vincea, are you here? You can also speak at the top. Thanks, Vincea.
I'll be very brief. I just wanted to thank you for doing this letter, for considering it on your agenda tonight. I missed your afternoon meeting, so I didn't see if you made any edits or changes to it. But other than fixing the typo, one small one, I am happy that you are sending a letter to the county planning director so that we have some answers about the railroad. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Vincea. Okay, next two up are coal-free PSC letter, Nora Weaver and Bob Agutter. If you could both step up, and then I'll start from the top of the list after these. You can use the mic at the top of the stairs.
One right there.
One right there.
Okay. And after Nora and Bob are Jean Marks, Bill Desler, and Leonard Lindstrom, if you want to get ready.
Members of the Bellingham City Council, my name is Nora Weaver. I reside in Bellingham. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the letter introduced to you regarding Puget Sound Energy's investment in a better, cleaner future for this region by Mr. Michael Illiquist. On behalf of the more than 25,000 members of the Sierra Club in Washington State, I would like to offer the following comments. Few of PSC's consumers know that almost 30% of our electricity comes from the Coal Strip Plant in Montana, owned in part by PSC. According to EPA data, Coal Strip ranks the ninth dirtiest polluter of power plants in the U.S. The Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission has asked PSC to examine the logic of its continued operation, in part due to the costs of cleaning the facility up to make it compliant to new EPA rules on emissions of CO2. We consumers applaud these new rules because they support the will of the people to reduce our contribution to deadly greenhouse gases responsible for global warming. PSC is currently at a crossroads, spend millions of dollars to essentially rebuild a coal plant that is an expensive fixer-upper, or invest in the only other viable alternative for the future of generations to come: renewable energy. Clean, responsible renewable energy is our future. According to the latest Energy Infrastructure Report from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, in the first five months of 2014, renewable energy sources accounted for 54% of new domestic electrical generation installed in the United States. During the same period, coal and nuclear provided no new capacity. I work at a local manufacturer of solar panels here in Bellingham. I get several calls a week from people all over Washington State, asking how they can get started installing solar at their homes, churches, businesses, et cetera. Our business is booming. We produced more solar panels this quarter than all of last year. We recently added a second shift to keep up with production. And congruently, installers of solar are also doing brisk business, creating even more jobs. And as business in renewable energy grows, so does the supply chain stateside, creating more manufacturing jobs right here in the U.S. There are many alternatives to power creation that do not involve the dirty, old fossil fuel models. I encourage the Bellingham City Council to adopt support of PSC divesting from coal and Mr. Illiquist's letter. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Nora.
Good evening, council members. I'm Bob Agutter, 78 North Point Drive, Lake Whatcom watershed. I wish to be associated with remarks of the previous speaker. I come before you this evening representing children of former neighbors in South and North Dakota. These are children who have been and are being exposed to the air pollution from the Coal Strip, which provides power to enable us to enjoy the light in this room. They are exposed to serious problems, lung problems, asthma. The external cost of producing electricity with coal is in excess of the retail value of the electricity generated. So the children in South Dakota, eastern Montana, are paying more for this electricity tonight than we are. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's right. I think you ought to send this letter. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, starting at the top of the list, Jean Marks, Bill Desler, and Leonard Lindstrom.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council and Madam Mayor. This is doubly awesome because I've never been at the top of the list, so this is like a first for me. I gave the city council, anyway, some supporting documentation for the reason why our group is here tonight, and that is the long version. I've provided the council with a fairly unpolitical, unbiased, well, nothing's unbiased, right? Nothing's unbiased. But this is the Reader's Digest version of what I brought in this afternoon for supporting documentation. And I'm a process guy. I normally would have gone through all of the stuff. The supporting documentation that you got was a press release that was released this morning by Veterans for Peace National. And we thought it would be necessary, as a local Veterans for Peace chapter, to get this, at least, on the, get the dialogue started. We know, we've been around the block on process, but we at least need to start the dialogue. So let me just start with a short statement, and then get to it. As the world watches in horror, Israel's ongoing bombardment of the Gaza Strip, which as of Monday has killed over 550 people, Palestinians trapped in a sealed-off territory, a unified call for an end to this assault has come in the form of worldwide demonstrations because, as one protester wrote, "silence is consent." So that's why we're here tonight, so we will no longer be silent on this issue, and hopefully the citizens of Bellingham won't either. So our resolution follows, a resolution by the City Council of Bellingham opposing the violence in Gaza and the targeting of civilians. Whereas, as members of Bellingham's Veterans for Peace Chapter 111, most of us have witnessed the horror of war and are deeply concerned by the state of Israel's slaughter of many innocent civilians in Gaza. I consider taking out slaughter, but it's a slaughter. Whereas, the membership of Whatcom Peace and Justice Center share our concern and endorse the following resolution. And whereas, the military assault against Palestinian children, women, and men, by air, by sea, and now by land, is a clear violation of international laws of war and human rights. And whereas, more than 550 Palestinians have been killed so far, almost all of them civilians, nearly a quarter of them children, thousands more wounded, including more than 1,000 children. And whereas, on July 7th, 2014, President Barack Obama called for the Israelis and Palestinians alike to restrain themselves and put an end to these acts of retribution. Whereas, the peoples of Palestine, Israel, and the world deserve to live in peace and harmony. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Bellingham, on behalf of the citizens of Bellingham, joins with the millions of people in the United States and around the globe who are shocked by the slaughter of civilians. And be it further resolved, the City Council of Bellingham, on behalf of the citizens of Bellingham urges both Hamas and the government of Israel to refrain from targeting innocent civilians. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bellingham, on behalf of the citizens of Bellingham, supports the cessation of hostilities in Palestine and Israel, and encourages all parties to search for a nonviolent path of peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Desler, Leonard Lindstrom, followed by Carol Follett.
Hi, I'm Bill Desler, a member of Veterans for Peace. I just wanted to reinforce what Jean was saying. I was in Vietnam whenever anything news like what's going on in Gaza takes place. It always brings me back there. I did see American soldiers shooting at women and children there, not out of meanness or cruelty, but just confusion and fear. And I know that that happens in every one of these kinds of situations. I'm not going to read a whole bunch of names, but there's a list here of 90 names of children, Palestinian children who have died in the last few days. It's compiled by The Washington Post, so I'm just going to read the first 10 names on the list, if it doesn't take too long. Omar Hamouda, age 7, killed in Beit Lahia. Nagan Mahmoud Al Zuidi, age 2, killed in Beit Lahia. Ahmed Hamouda, age 10, killed in Beit Lahia. Mohammed Ziad Al Rahi, age 6, killed in Beit Lahia. Ibrahim Jamal Kamal Nasr, 13 years old, killed in Khan Yunis. Musa Abdarakman Abu Jarad, 6 months old, killed, location unknown. Alam Musa Abu Jarad, age 4, location unknown. Ahmad Hamed Elwan, age 7, killed in Gaza. Kasim Hamad Elwan, age 4, killed in Gaza. Sarah Mohammed Al Bustan, age 13, killed in Gaza. Thanks for your time. Some other people are going to read some more names later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Leonard Lindstrom, followed by Carol Follett and Thelma Follett. That'll probably take us to the end of our 15 minutes.
Good evening, Bellingham people. I'd like to say a few words about my mother. She's the only one, mother I knew that had a heart. She shared it with me for her whole lifetime. She was an open-hearted person. She had skills I didn't know. I got many benefits from her classroom time in college without being there myself. She seemed to have passed a flying colors grade one. That's one of the most important grades you could pass as a child. And also in the Navy, I passed top class, A+, on all my military schools. I had an easy time in schools, but I flunked church, Dad's church. Now I have his stool here that he sat on and died on. You know, they're used by the babysitter-type teachers. If you don't behave right, you get to sit on the stool. They end up sitting on the stool the rest of their lifetime. Turns into a bar stool. Or a pew. Make the transition sitting in an electric chair sometimes. It's not the, it's a very old-fashioned way of doing things. A professional teacher will never, ever put a child on this stool. They teach the right way of behaving. They don't tell a child, "You sit on a stool until you learn." If you don't teach, they don't learn. Teach, teach, teaches. Name of the game when you're dealing with children. Not, I, Dad had to sit on it his whole life. He was put there by Grandpa Lindstrom. I refused to. I refused to use it. I will not put a child on that and point my finger at him. A teacher can't do this, and there are peers. I think you're old timers, you understand what I'm talking about. Mostly you've been there yourself. Go ahead. Have teachers with a heart. Like mother, she shared her heart every day that she was with us. Dad kind of closed the door. Negative door. Anything he said to him, he had the word "no" on his tip of his tongue. I'm all for the positive thinking. That's the only way you can live. You can't teach being negative. You just can't. So that's be some more positive teachers that helped me and the other teachers in school.
Thank you, Leonard. Carol Follett and Thelma Follett.
I'm here to support the whereas that Jean mentioned earlier, and I'm going to read some more of the names. They're difficult to pronounce, and I realize that these names will not be said at a graduation ceremony, at a wedding ceremony, will never be uttered by their children. And it's not just that they have died. All children, all life is precious, but they died in a very horrible way. Rick Ahmed Al Hayek. Mohammed Ismail Abu Muslim Abraaj, 13. Faraz Juma Al Mahom, 5 months. Mohammed Salem Natiz, 4. Rahaf Khalil Al Jalboor, 4. Ismail Youssef Al Kafarna, age unknown. Falah Tarek Shabar, age unknown. Jihad Assam Shahbar, age unknown. Wasim Assam Shahbar, age unknown. Yasim Al Astol, 4. Osama Maham Al Astol, 6. Hamza Raytari, 6. Ahed Bakar, 10. Zakaria Bakar, 10. Mohammed Bakar, 11. Ismail Bakar, 9. Ibrahim Ramadan, 10. Sarah Omar Sika Al Eid, 4. Moyed Al Arrajaj, 3. Manar Majid Al Batash, 13. Amanas Ala Al Batash, 10. Qusay Ala Al Batash, unknown. Qusay Hisam Al Batash, 12. Shahad Al Qinaoui, 7. Nawur Marwan Al Najd, 10. Basam Abdel Rahman Qatab, 6. Yasemin Mohammed Al Mutwak, 4. Abdallah Ramadan Abu Gazal, 5. Fatima Al Hajj, 12. Miriam Atta Mohammed Al Arja. Salah Awad, 11. I cannot read anymore, but these names are here for you if you request them from the city. And please, let's do something to protect the children. Please.
Thank you, Carol. Thelma.
Thelma Follett, and this is Ellen Murphy, and we're sharing our time briefly together. No, not allowed? It's not allowed? Oh, okay. I really, I want to read not the names, but a few ages, and I see one on the top that really affected me when I read about it last week. But what I do want to say is, when I started calling on this about 10 days ago, four children had been killed. I called all of my representatives, I wrote emails where I could. Then another 10 or 12. We're now up to 90 children. I called my representatives today. I said, "I've been calling you." The count this morning was 60, now it's 90. When we slept last night in our beds, they bombed a village, 72 people were killed outright. And I want to read one name here because this did affect me. Not the name, I can't pronounce these names. This little boy was 5 years old, and he arrived in emergency in shreds. There was nothing left of him. Now, I saw a photo the other day of a baby shoe filled with blood and gore, a baby. I don't know, you'd have to have a heart of stone not to start right now to save the children here in Gaza and move on to save the children everywhere in the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that allowed?
Okay, quickly, let's do it.
Do we have time, a little bit of time?
Just go ahead real quickly, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Miriam Attia Mohammed Al Arya, 11. Salah Awad Al Nazwa, 6. Mahmoud Nahed Al Nazwa, 5. Mohammed Kalaf Al Nazwa, 4. This is all one family. Nidal Kalaf Al Nazwa, 5. Unborn baby. Mohammed Arif, 13. Mohammed Balakay, 1 1/2. Syria Ad Abadal, 8. I can't read the rest, but I just want to say that I've been here long enough to know that there will be people who will say that this is not the business of a city council. And I'd just like to say that this is the business of 1,000 city councils for the sake of America and the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, we're going to close the public comment period for now. Anyone who's left on the list, we'll start back up after the three public hearings, before we do the rest of our business still, so it shouldn't be too long. And so, we're going to move into the first of our three public hearings this evening. First is consideration of a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone for approximately four acres of land in areas 1, 1A, and 8 of the Sunnyland Neighborhood. The docketed comprehensive plan amendment proposal from the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association includes rezoning the properties from residential single detached to residential single detached attached with a density of 6,250 square feet per dwelling unit. An alternative proposal from staff suggests rezoning the properties to residential multi-duplex with a density of 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit, and to only allow certain infill toolkit housing forms. By a 5-1 vote, the Planning Commission recommended the city council deny both proposals. And we're going to, I assume, have a little presentation from staff, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Greg Ockett, Planning Department. We will have a brief presentation from staff. We'll start with Alan Mariner from the Legal Department, and then Darby Coles at the podium will give you the staff report. Moshe Quinn is also here with me this evening. At that point, then, it would be appropriate to hear from the applicants, the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association, and then the rest of the public. So if that sounds like a good plan of attack, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Alan.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney. I just have a couple, I guess, opening comments based on some issues that have come up as this matter comes to council. First, I think it's important to remember that the matters before you is a legislative matter, not a quasi-judicial matter. Because it includes a neighborhood plan amendment, council has much more discretion in a legislative matter than a quasi-judicial matter. The history of the proposal and how it got to you tonight is also important. I just clarified that with Mr. Ockett just prior to this hearing, and there were three proposals that actually came forward for docketing. So they went through the Planning Commission, they came to council, and at that time, council directed staff to docket the Neighborhood Association's proposal. So there was a property owner's proposal that came forward, but was not docketed. Now, and as I said, council directed staff to docket the Neighborhood Association's proposal. Now, the Planning Commission, as council president has indicated, recommended denial of both the Neighborhood Association's proposal and the staff's alternative recommendation, finding that under BMC Bellingham Municipal Code Section 2110-150 Subsection B1, only a property owner or authorized agent of that property owner can request a site-specific neighborhood plan amendment. And that raises a couple of issues, and that's what I want to touch on. The first is what authority does council have tonight, or at some point in the future when it works on this matter, to consider the matter under that code section that I just cited? And I would point out to council that you amended that code section in 2011. It was my understanding and staff's understanding that part of the reason for amending it and adding a section, and I'll read it, it's subsection B1C entitled "All Amendments: Both Site-Specific and Non-Site-Specific Amendments May Be Added to the Annual Review Docket by the City Council at Any Time During the Year." Our understanding of that amendment was to ensure that council had the right to add non-site-specific and site-specific matters to the docket at any time. The plain language appears to give you that authority. Obviously, you could interpret that language as giving you some other authority. The second matter, and I'll be very brief, that I want to comment on is staff anticipates that the property owner may offer an alternative proposal, what I would call the third proposal for council's consideration. That third proposal, if it is presented this evening, and we anticipate that it will, did not go through the Type 6 process up until this point. So the question becomes, what authority does council have to consider the property owner's proposal, if there is a proposal made? In fact, also the staff's alternative proposal. And again, I would come back to, this is a legislative matter. Council has great discretion, broad discretion, and has sufficient discretion to consider all three proposals, if you end up with three proposals before you. And at the end of the day, and I anticipate it won't be this evening, you could approve any one of those three proposals as-is, or as you choose to amend it. You could reject all three, and that's what the Planning Commission recommended, actually recommended that you reject two, because there were only two that they considered. Or you could remand the matter to the Planning Commission for consideration if the property owner does submit a third proposal for consideration of that proposal. And so, I'll be available to answer any questions, and with that, I'll turn it back to Greg, or maybe to Darby.
Thank you, Ellen.
All right, it sounds like it's me. Good evening, everyone. I'm really happy to see so many people here tonight. I'm assuming a lot of you are here to discuss the Sunnyland Neighborhood proposal. And I think there's been quite a lot of maybe misinformation, so I appreciate the opportunity to clarify and hopefully get some questions answered for some people. We are here tonight to talk about a four-acre parcel that's located in the Sunnyland Neighborhood, and the property was previously owned by and the property was previously owned by the State Department of Transportation, which is why it's commonly referred to as the DOT property. And for a time, there was a conditional use permit to operate a park-and-ride there. That was back in 2002. And during the time that the property was owned by the Department of Transportation, most of it was zoned public. You can see it here in the red dash. Some, a few pieces were zoned within the adjacent single-family zoning. And in 2007, the property was purchased by Sunset Commons LLC, which is the current property owner. And the Bellingham Municipal Code has a requirement for everywhere in the city that if property passes from public ownership to private ownership, it automatically reverts to our lowest-density zoning, which is single-family, 20,000 square feet per unit. So that's what happened in 2007. And that's on purpose, because it provides the community an opportunity to go through a rezon process to determine what's appropriate for that site. So this has been happening for a while. For context, the property is in between East Sunset and Illinois. There's single-family residential development to the south. There's a couple retail centers, employment centers, parks, and schools. And there, as you know, are very few undeveloped properties like this in the city limits, especially without environmental constraints. There's also existing infrastructure, utilities, and streets. So in planning lingo, this is what we call an infill opportunity. And you know that we have quite a task ahead of us with the comprehensive plan update for how we're going to accommodate growth. However, infill does need to be done with consideration, and that's why we have some comprehensive plan and rezon criteria to analyze the best way for each individual situation. So since the sale in 2007, there have been a number of attempts to define what is the right zoning for this property. And this started in 2007. There were proposals submitted, it's kind of like, here we go again, proposals submitted by the property owner, by planning staff, and by the neighborhood for consideration. They're all slightly different. And as Alan mentioned, the city council chose to docket the neighborhood proposal for review, which is what's before you tonight. And he mentioned that Planning Commission concluded that only a property owner or authorized agent should request the rezon and recommend, and they recommended denial. However, this has been turning over and over, and staff would really recommend that because you have a number of options before you, that zoning be adopted to create a framework of certainty for the property owners and for the neighborhood. It doesn't mean that anything would have to happen right now. The property owner could go back and develop a site-specific proposal that will come forward at a later date and have its own public process, where it would go through the hearing examiner and through public notice for design and the specifics. But for the last number of years, there's just been a lot of uncertainty and a lot of fear about what is going to be built here and what that's, what is that going to look like? So from the staff's perspective, we would like to see the matter, the matter settled. So how do we go about settling that? And what we look to is the criteria in the comprehensive plan. And I think you have quite a long list of what some of those goals are, but the highlights are, again, accommodating population growth rate infill, environmental and fiscal sustainability, providing a variety of housing types and sizes to meet emerging trends in demographics, lifestyles, and affordability, and compatibility with neighborhood character. And when you look at the Sunnyland neighborhood, we talked about this in Planning Commission, it is a very well-established character, and it's a really cool neighborhood. I have lived in Bellingham for a long time and walked around there, and it's full of art. It's infused with little pockets of gardens and kids and chickens running around everywhere, and there's a lot of different styles. It's mostly single-family, traditional architecture. And the other thing that I think is really neat about the neighborhood, and it's evidenced here tonight, is that people have invested a lot in this neighborhood, and it's really seen a lot of improvement in the last decade, and there's a really strong sense of community. And so, that information really informs, you know, what, what's the appropriate scale for a proposal? So the staff alternative before you contains a number of elements of consensus that we believe all the stakeholders are in agreement of. Now, these might not be the nitty-gritty details, but I do think it's important for us to recognize that there is some common ground here that we're building on. The staff alternative is also a result of changes that have occurred since the neighborhood proposal was developed. So since 2007, there's been a lot of work in the community to talk about appropriate infill. And I think someone mentioned last time that this is a conspiracy by the Planning Department to get the infill toolkit in. And it's not a conspiracy. We're very open about the fact that there was a lot of work done on the infill toolkit to identify which housing types are appropriate and to establish really strict design standards. So yes, we think that this is a very appropriate use of infill toolkit, and we would like to see it happen here. And I would like to go into some detail about how the infill toolkit actually incorporates a lot of the concerns that have been raised and also a lot of the goals that have been raised by a number of parties. Some slight nuances. So as far as the zoning designation goes, I know that this has been a very strong point of anxiety for the neighborhood. The very first picture I had up there had a big sign on the property that says, "No multifamily zoning." And I think that there is a feeling that if it's called residential multiple, that means that people are going, the developer is going to be able to build multi-story apartments. And I cannot emphasize enough that this proposal that staff is recommending would not allow apartments to be built in the Sunnyland neighborhood. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that. The neighborhood proposal does include a provision for some attached housing. And what staff is looking at is, in the infill toolkit, there is a section, if you look at page 93 of your packet, it's the first page of the infill toolkit, and under applicability, section A, this thing is gigantic, it says, "In the residential multi-duplex zone, only small house, smaller house, cottage, detached accessory dwelling unit, carriage house, and duplex are permitted." So that is the rationale that staff has for looking to that zoning designation. We typically would not allow attached housing in a single-family zone. It's not appropriate under that designation. So we have a structure in place, a regulatory structure, that allows for some small mixed uses that I'll go into. The other thing that I think is important to note, I know this is very small, but there's an RM duplex zone in close vicinity to the property. And the density difference also, this is a difference of six units. So this is not going to solve the city's infill problems to debate between 6250 and 5,000 square feet per unit. But the 5,000 square feet per unit is consistent with the neighborhood to the south. So that's why staff landed on the 5,000 square feet. As far as permitted uses go, let's get into this in a little bit more detail. The docketed proposal, obviously, single-family detached, which is the traditional neighborhood design, which would also be permitted under the staff recommendation. The neighborhood proposal would permit attached ADUs. Staff believes that would also be appropriate to add attached and detached ADUs and carriage houses, which we'll talk about a little bit. Cottage houses are another form of single-family resident, residential, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then, single-family attached and duplex would be the highest intensity, and the only difference is a lot line on the, between the common wall. So what I'd like to do is go through these housing types and talk a little bit about that. Oh, but one other thing first. Single-family development obviously does not guarantee good design. We all know that. We've seen a lot of neighborhoods in Bellingham. I'm sure some of you might recognize this. And so, the neighborhood did call out in their proposal that design standards are important. And what it would entail going that route is to develop a new set of design standards for single-family residences, which we don't think is a very good precedent to set from a staff perspective. However, the toolkit does have very detailed design standards for single-family residences as well as the other housing types that were mentioned. The infill toolkit, it was adopted in 2009, and it also includes some very specific regulations, not just design, but limits on the size and the scale of, of the structures, much more restrictive than what's in the single-family code. So we think that it's just, I can't emphasize, it's a very useful existing tool. So to go through the housing types in a little bit more detail, I mentioned single-family detached. And the way that those are outlined in the toolkit, they're described as small and smaller house. Some of the design standards are that they need to have gabled pitched roofs, they need to have front porches, they need to have public entrances facing the street, need to minimize the impact of garages on the streetscape and have private backyards. The lot sizes are specific in the staff recommendation to the type of unit that is being constructed. So it's floor area ratio, which I know many of you are familiar with, that says, "If you have a certain lot size, then you can only build this amount of square footage." Whereas in the single-family residential code, you could technically build up to a 5,500-square-foot house, five feet from the property line. The toolkit is much more restrictive, and it really limits the scale. We think that would be appropriate to have development that fits in with that existing character of the Sunnyland neighborhood. It also would require 60% open space and have a height limit of 25 feet for structures. In our single-family zones, the height limit is 35 feet, which is three stories. We mentioned in the staff report, accessory dwellings and carriage houses. And these are auxiliary units that have to be associated with a primary single-family residence. And so, one, either the single-family residence or the auxiliary unit has to be owner-occupied. There's a limit on the size. Actually, this is a carriage unit, which is a unit above a garage, and this is located about a block away from the subject property. I thought it was a really, really cool example of the kind of thing that is being proposed. There's also restrictions that it needs to either have an alley access, a secondary access, or a parcel greater than 10,000 square feet in order to build something like this. And that it can only be 40% of the size of the main structure. The auxiliary units also have very specific design standards, that the height has to be less than or equal to the main structure and less than 25 feet, has a separate entrance similar architecturally to the main structure and oriented to the street, and also that windows need to be staggered for privacy purposes. And finally, I mentioned duplexes, which in the neighborhood docketed proposal is referred to as single-family attached, again, because the property line goes down the middle. There's, again, front entrance requirements, gabled roofs, minimization of garages. And single-family attached actually isn't in the toolkit, but staff would definitely support that as a different housing option. Another thing that I think is really important to emphasize, that I don't know if everyone's clear about this, is that the city does not regulate rental housing. So if the property was zoned single-family, the developer could still build all single-family houses and rent all of them out, and there's no limit on, on the number of rooms. So whether or not the development is a rental or homeownership is not really under consideration as part of this proposal. Finally, cottage housing is a grouping of small, compact, detached, single-family units around a common open space with shared parking. And these can either be on separate lots, and so sold fee simple, or they can be on a common parcel, and then they can be condominiumized, which I'm not sure is a real word, but we use it all the time, to be able to sell the units individually. The toolkit says there could be only a maximum of, a maximum of eight cottages on a parcel. There are size and floor area limits, requirements for both private and common open space, front porches, parking away from the street, and that it has to blend architecturally into the existing neighborhood. So it's another option for some different housing types that we don't have right now in the city, and also an opportunity to build more community through shared space. So in conclusion, reiterating or developing new standards for one property does not improve usability for citizens or for the staff. We already have excellent standards adopted in the Bellingham Municipal Code, and the housing types that were shown, we believe are appropriate considering the character and scale of this portion of Sunnyland neighborhood. So we urge the council to adopt the staff-recommended proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Darby. Okay, what's next?
Next would be the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association, so they can present their proposal to you.
We're gonna, we're gonna do that as the first comment of the public hearing.
That's what's next.
Okay.
We're ready for that.
So we're ready for the public hearing. Is there a list I can get? Sure.
This is a question for the staff before we begin. As I came in, a question was raised. Is there a deadline for when this proposal needs to be acted upon, first, second, reading for final? Because often, there's a annual calendar on the approvals as well.
Yeah, great question. Thank you, Michael. We can only approve comprehensive plan amendments once a year. It's an annual process. The deadline for approval of this year's amendments is August 11th. So you will be doing third and final of all of the amendments that you've reviewed to date on August 11th. So I guess remanding this to the Planning Commission would mean that we would miss that deadline, and it would hold it over for another year. It would be the effect of that.
Is that permissible to hold over a year?
Sure.
Okay, is that, is that it? Any other questions from council members before we proceed? Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So a couple things first. As the neighbor, Patrick, has asked for 10 minutes to speak about the neighborhood proposal, and I'm allowing that. He'll go first. Otherwise, please be as pithy as possible. We have a lot to do tonight, but we want to hear from you. So, you know, state your, your feelings, but we'd like to try and move through folks as quickly as we can so that everyone gets a chance to speak who wants to. And then also, I can't predict exactly what we'll do at the end of the public hearing, but we typically do not vote on an action the same evening that we hold a public hearing. So we will likely follow history and refer this to a work session at another time. So we're going to start out with Patrick. I can't remember your last name, Patrick, but come on up. McKee, that's right. And after Patrick's done, we'll start with Mike Wheeler and Hank Plodowski.
Councilmember layman, I, as you can see, I didn't sign, sign the list. I was hoping to make my comments toward the end of the public comment period so that I could comment on things that I heard during the public comment period. So if you will let me make my comments at the end, I would appreciate it.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with Mike Wheeler and Hank Plodowski, followed by Mickey McDarmid. Come on down and introduce yourself and share your feelings about the Sunnyland neighborhood proposals.
Okay, Mike Wheeler, I live on the 2,700 block of Ellis Street on the Sunnyland side. I'll try to be short. I heard a lot of, I heard opportunity mentioned quite a bit and about proposals, what's proposed for that lot. And a proposal isn't a guarantee. And whatever was proposed for that lot, I didn't see it as an opportunity for me. One of my concerns is, is what I understand about infill is when it applies to multifamily zoning, it already has to kind of exist in the area before you can apply for it. And we're going to go from low density, skip medium density, and go right to multifamily density. In the middle of an area that is surrounded by lots that may want to do the same thing, and then it just starts to grow out from there. And it's not our responsibility to give a counterproposal with what we'll accept. It's the council's responsibility to hear their proposal and just say, "No. It ain't going to work. Come up with your own." So I'm kind of PO'd right now because I live there, and I like it there, and I've never seen multifamily zoning benefit a neighborhood. And, you know, I'm not stupid, you know? So it doesn't seem to work. Let's zone it. Let's zone it in keeping with existing houses, and, and, and just work with that. And that's infill, and that works, and it keeps the neighborhood intact. And it makes it so somebody else can't come in and buy the lot before it's developed and come up with a new proposal, and we're down here again. You know, so it's, it's, it's a simple solution. Just, just keep it in keeping with what's already there. And that, to me, is an opportunity, and that benefits me, and, and it is infill. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Hank Plodowski, followed by Mickey McDarmid and Linda Twitchell.
Hi, my name's Hank Plodowski. I own the property at 507 East Illinois Street, that's directly adjacent to the Sunset Commons LLC property. I want to say that I support the SNA Amendment to Rezone Single Family. I'm adamantly opposed to the Planning Department piggybacking with a standalone proposal for multifamily zoning. Their proposal simply suggests single-family housing as part of the mixture of housing. I don't think it requires even one single-family house, if I'm not mistaken. Calling their proposal a modification of the SNA proposal, kinda like taking your Volkswagen in for four new tires and coming out with a city bus on eight. Not a modification, it's a standalone. Planning Department proposals didn't get vetted by the City Council for docketing, and I don't feel that they, that they deserve or belong to be at this hearing. I suggest you look at the Sunnyland proposal, and regarding any questions about it, Patrick McKee is one of the original founders and writers of the proposal. I feel we all have a lot of faith in his knowledge of it. So, thank you, and I appreciate you all getting together again. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Mickey?
Good evening. I feel like I've been up here a million times about the same issue.
Few times, same people.
Someone asked me tonight, how long you've been working on this? And I said, seven years. So, recently I've heard questions to the validity of us in Sunnyland being able to rezone the property that, that the owners own. This didn't happen in a vacuum, as you know. This happened after many years and many meetings with the owners on many different occasions. We participated with them in public meetings, we've stood before you and the Planning Commission on a few occasions, and now they cry that it's not fair. Come on. Their attorney basically scared the Planning Commission, threatening that if they passed our amendment, any of their properties could be rezoned by anyone without their say. That's a far cry from following the process of a neighborhood plan amendment. We stuck with it and followed the procedure and got our amendment docketed, unlike the proposal by the city you'll hear tonight, the one they say is similar to ours. You won't hear us say that, though. Two big differences, zoning, single-family or multifamily. The Sunnyland residents have showed you in letters and emails many times over the years that they want single-family zoning. The Sunnyland amendment was careful to include infill for the future. We added to our original number of units. We played by the rules, and now we are asking you, the elected representatives of us, to vote and approve the Sunnyland amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Twitchell, followed by Jack Swanson and Bill Guyer.
Hi, I'm Linda Twitchell. I'm here representing the Building Industry Association. And point number one, I've gotta reiterate, I would believe the planning commission is correct. If you read the Bellingham Municipal Code, it says the only people who can give a proposal for docketing are the land, in a site-specific situation, are the landowner or his or her agent. And I think it's a real question of if you've got something in the code now that conflicts with that, which is correct, if you're going to allow anyone to make a proposal of this kind, where do you stop, et cetera? Okay, that's, that's point number one. Point number two that I'd like to make, though, is that I challenge you to find any neighborhood in Bellingham that is going to say, we will accept more density. This is one of the main problems we have with our planning process. We're now looking at comp plan rewrite, we have a problem with lack of available land. The current comp plan and those in the past have very clearly stated that to avoid sprawl, the city is going to look to denser development in transportation corridors and urban villages. If this isn't a transportation corridor, what is? This is on Sunset, a few blocks from I-5. It's not deep within a neighborhood, it's on the edge. It seems to me that if you're serious about wanting to control sprawl, allowing greater density is gonna have to be possible in places like this. So if we're not serious about allowing that, you might want to, in looking at your comp plan, reconsider where you think you are gonna allow greater density, because this is one of the planning issues facing us this time. And if we're giving the Neighborhood Association 10 minutes, I would ask that you give the property owners the same consideration tonight. Thank you. Here's a copy of a letter I emailed to you all today, and an extra one to come around to, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. Jack Swanson?
I'm here on behalf of the property owner, and there are three names on your list. There's mine, and then there's Bill Guyer, and there's also Scott Swanson. And what I'd like to do is reverse the order and substitute the property owner, David Edelstein, for Scott Swanson. So we would have three speakers.
Reverse the order and substitute David for Scott.
Yes.
Okay.
That's good.
Let's go for it.
Okay, thank you. David.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, all ladies and gentlemen.
Your microphone on, Dave.
Not only is my microphone on, but I want to thank you all for your public service. I certainly appreciate it. Somewhere in the room is Greg Hinton. He is a partner in Sunset Commons. I'm sure he's here. He gave me the job of talking because he's a nice fellow. We purchased this property in 2007, and the, the idea was to redevelop this property into much-needed housing. Affordable housing, not government-built affordable housing, not housing based upon a person's income proportion to the median income, but affordable housing in the marketplace. In our community, we have a, we have a problem, and a lot of you have heard me say this, and the problem is, our proportion of rental housing is going up, our proportion of homeownership is going down. That's our problem, that's a community problem, not mine, not yours, not the Sunnyland neighborhood, all of us. We have to stop that, and we have to give more people in the community an opportunity to purchase housing. Our plans got put on hold when the recession came. It is true that we were involved in planning for this site vis-à-vis a charrette and other assorted planning extravaganzas. We were strong-armed into that by an unnamed former planning director. It was not our intention to redevelop that site, and tonight, it's not our intention to redevelop that site. Now, neither one of these proposals are ours. We're the property owner. We're trying to come up with a plan, we've hired consultants, which we're gonna come up with a plan, hopefully in this calendar year, and when it's logical, we'll come forward. And we'll come forward with something that makes sense. I will not take up your entire meeting reciting a litany of missteps, mistruths, and misdeeds that were foisted upon us. There is absolutely no compelling reason to act on either one of these proposals this evening, neither of which is ours. There's no compelling reason. What are you going to accomplish? You're gonna rezone the property for something that we don't want to build? That's gonna accomplish something? I, I, I understand the neighborhood would like some certainty of the future. I understand that the city wants us to build a very high-quality housing development. The city needs it. And we, the property owners, absolutely understand that one house per half-acre, which is zoning what we have now, is not in our best interests long-term. So we're all in agreement. How are we gonna get there? Greenbrier Construction has been building very fine homes and very fine neighborhoods for almost 35 years in this community. We're very proud of what we do. We build houses to sell them to people just like everyone in this room. I think that what Greg and I would like as an outcome of this evening's meeting is, what would be to the benefit of the entire community? Allow us to complete our proposal? Allow us to submit the proposal in 2014? Redocket all three proposals? Redocket the staff's proposal, redocket the neighborhood proposal, docket our proposal, and let's take it in front of the Planning Commission again, and let's do it right, and let's see if we can all, we can all get along, or at least move it forward to a place where it would be a credit for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so, next up would be Jack's, sorry? Oh, okay, he took your place, Bill Guyer. Oh, right, the reversal of the order. Okay.
With your permission, I'm gonna hand an item to the clerk and copies to the council.
Here, we'll hand them. You don't need to hand them. Good evening, council. For the record, Bill Guyer, Guyer Associates, 1008 16th Street, here tonight as planning consultant, working on behalf with Sunset Commons, the property owner, as you heard this evening. I just handed the original to the clerk, copy to the staff, and copies to the council of our letter, and it'll be one of the five major points I wish to make this evening to talk about tonight's public hearing, whose purpose is to look at the compliance of this application to the comprehensive plan amendment criteria and the rezon criteria. Little basic step that the council members are probably aware of, but if not, I'd like to touch on them and for the benefit of the audience as well. We know that comprehensive plan rezon requests have essentially three major steps. There's the docketing step, which the council reviews and decides what should be reviewed. There is the application step. For whomever the applicant is, the code requires completion of all necessary forms and certification thereof, and truthfully attesting to that information and paying fees. And there's a third step, which apparently this evening we're into, which is the legislative review, under this current review, for the Planning Commission and ultimately the council. You have those three major steps. My first letter is gonna talk and address about that point and cite the deficiencies that are in the current application as exists to date. The council members, and for the benefit of the record, are aware that I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, I have over 35 years professional practice in the field, and I have some detailed commentary in the letter that I won't go blow-by-blow, but there's some very important pieces I want to point out. Because my opinion is basically the application as it is presently before you from the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association, as managed by the former planning director, is flawed, incomplete, and should not proceed. Some of the basic things that attest to that in my letter, when you look at page two, where it talks about that Planning Department Form #BSD102, which is the pre-application form, and that's required for the citation I have in the letter, that was not done. A pre-application form is required. Point two, the pre-application neighborhood meeting, Exhibit B, and it's also required by the code in the citation there, 2010-180. That's the first public official notification of the, the actual proposal being considered. Now arguably, there have been discussions and meetings within the public and the staff prior as to what potentially should occur, but the first time that's actually put to paper was after your action in 2012 to docket the issue. You don't know the issue unless an application defines it. Most importantly, item three there, the comprehensive Form 158B, and that's the actual comprehensive plan amendment application, and it's, in this case, it's corollary piece, which is the rezon application form. Why is that important? If you look in the middle, bottom third, actually, of page two of my letter, look at the certification, where it says, at the bottom of each of these forms, that the applicant is, the applicant's required to sign this, and particularly, it says that "I am the owner of the property described above, or am an authorized agent by the owner to sign and submit this application. I grant permission of the city staff and agents to enter upon the site at any reasonable time to consider the merits of application and post-public notice. I certify, certify, under the penalty of perjury, of the laws of the state of Washington, that the information on the application and information submitted herewith is true, complete, and accurate. I certify under the penalty of perjury." It goes on, "I also acknowledge, by signing this application, I'm the responsible party to receive all correspondence from the city as it relates to any notices, and take the responsibility of providing information to the city should that change." And then they sign this. Now, why is this important? Because in the subject file, I, I asked and received from the staff all of the files for this case. I reviewed it in the presence of staff at the Planning Department. I went through and looked for these forms, they don't exist. I'll say it again, the application forms do not exist. They weren't now, were not filled out. So you have no one that's attesting, certifying to the validity of any information before you tonight. You have no mechanism to direct staff to get information, and the staff can then direct someone to deliver it to you and attest to its accuracy. You know from previous cases that is a fatal flaw when a private sector proposal comes before you. I submit that this application, since it doesn't have either of those forms, is entirely flawed. And I spoke with Mr. Alcott on July 18, 2014, just to confirm, and I asked both he and staff member of the existence of seven specific items, five of which are in this letter, and asked him, I said, you know, do these exist? And he, he confirmed, no, they do not. I asked him again, is, if I say that, is it an accurate statement? He at the desk said, yes, that would be an accurate statement. So I don't say this to Greg's negative points, I say this to the previous director. There was an oversight to this project that was flawed from the get-go, that was not transparent and responsible, neither to you, the council members, nor certainly to the Sunnyland neighborhood. It placed them severely at risk. My letter closes with some commentary that relates to what Council Jack and Scott Swanson have said here, relative to this being a Type 6 versus a Type 5 application. I won't go through that. I won't go through that, but it's just simply to say, if indeed it is a Type 5, there are other deficiencies. So my second major point that I'll hand up to the council relates to the SEPA review. The second letter that I've handed up to the council, and I trust Mr. Knutson, I passed seven copies to you, so hopefully everyone will have one.
If you can't count, it's not my fault.
I know, that's true. I do have an extra though. Okay, there's seven, good, thank you. Okay. And as the council is aware, and staff certainly, that when you're making these types of legislative reviews, they do require a SEPA checklist, they do require SEPA review, they do require SEPA determination. As the council members knows, know, for six years I served as the SEPA responsible official for the city of Bellingham. I've testified in Superior Court and other hearing examiners and other advisory boards as expert witness on SEPA. And so I looked at the SEPA checklist. I again requested the entire file from the staff, which they provided, and read every document that was in there, and went through the checklist line by line. The letter that's before you has quite a few deficiencies in the review, and I'll note a couple very important ones. And at some point, I'm going to want to launch the screen here and get into the city's website, so I'll do that while I'm talking. There's several things in there, and one of the most important ones is going to appear on page two, the bottom half of the page, where the SEPA checklist asks for information about stormwater facilities and what would the project, what would the proposal, how it would affect stormwater. Well, what was not cited at all in the checklist that's provided to the responsible official, in this case Jeff Thomas, and also to the Planning Commission, what was not disclosed were several existing stormwater mains, not branches, but mains, city stormwater mains that traverse north-south midpoint of the site through the site. Those are not going to come up, and they have a very serious impact on the ultimate development of the site. But most importantly, when you look at how the SEPA checklist was performed, it was prepared by staff on May 7, May 9, and you look at the attached certified mailing list, these will be pages A2 through A1 and A2 in my attachment, you'll notice that the property owner does not appear on the mailing list. So the checklist was prepared. Inadequate, inaccurate, incomplete information was in the checklist, and I'll note that that's a fatal flaw in any checklist, quite frankly, you go back to the point of beginning. Well, that checklist, now that information was vetted with the owner, the checklist was not sent to the owner. Equally important, I've attached the determination of nonsignificance that was issued May 16. That same certified mailing list was used. The DNS was not sent to Sunset Commons. That is very critical, because the first point that Sunset Commons became aware that this item was going to come into the legislative review was when it received on May 27 the public meeting notice from the Planning Commission for its June 12 meeting. Mr. Edelstein was already in transit out of country and could not comment on the document.
I just want to let you know, Bill, that was the nine-minute mark.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm going to hand one final item, and depending on what occurs tonight, we may submit other things to the record, but this is a site plan of, this is survey, excuse me. This is a survey prepared by David Evidence Associates for Sunset Commons when they first looked at the site. You'll see on this site plan, and staff has received this before, that shows these utilities that I'm speaking of. And when you incorporate those into the proposal tonight, the Sunnyland Neighborhood proposal, albeit that they estimate in the high twenties of potential houses, when you apply the development standards with the proposed zoning to the onsite restrictions, you only end up with 15 to 16 single-family lots. Now, as the staff had said earlier, they only see about a six or seven unit difference between their proposal and Sunnyland, so I think that speaks to this location not meeting your comprehensive plan goal requirements for as much infill capacity as possible. So I'll hand these up to you. So in conclusion, the application has some major problems. SEPA is insufficient, which leads to some improper analysis as to how this application meets the comp plan and rezone requirements, and I think it essentially does not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Jack Swanson. Following Jack are Terry and Dan Sherman and Diana Davidson.
Jack Swanson, 900 Dupont Street, Bellingham, here for Sunset Commons. I'd like to say something about affordable housing versus housing that's affordable. We need housing that's affordable, and let me give you a little anecdote. Good news, my son's in-laws moved here from Omaha, Nebraska. They sold their five-bedroom, six-bathroom, three-car garage house on a golf course in west Omaha with a swimming pool for about $300,000. That house in Bellingham would be twice that much at least, I have no idea. And they bought a house in the Silver Beach area, it's about five blocks from my house actually, and they paid about $300,000 for it. And it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, small place on a lot that they actually share the yard with the house next door and have no view at all. We need affordable housing, and what's been happening in the city is that the city, or housing that's affordable, I'm sorry, the city essentially has been following policies that drive people out of the city or create more rentals. And it's the same city that sued the county, trying to stop the county from allowing growth to flee Bellingham and go into the rural areas where people could actually afford houses. And so you really, I think, need to look at the larger effect, the larger issues of what it is you're doing. Staff report gives you three options. I'd like to suggest that there are four, and perhaps disagree with Alan just slightly about what he said on your ability to act tonight. Staff says deny one, or vote for one, vote for the other, or vote for none of them. And what I would like to suggest is that you allow the Edelstein proposal, when it's polished up, and the other two to go on the docket for 2015 and consider it along with the 2015 comprehensive plan amendments. And that's why you really aren't in a position to send this all back to the Planning Commission now, because to do so, you'd have to extend your deadline for the approval of the other comprehensive plan amendments, so it can be joined up by whatever you decided to do with the three proposals we're talking about here, so they could all go forward together for the 2014 comp plan amendments that are batched. So I'm suggesting that the best approach may be to get everything on the table, let's let everybody submit what they want to, and let's vet all that and decide what's best and what's in the best interest of the public and all of the city, not just the Sunnyland Neighborhood, or what they perceive to be in their best interest. And that's really, the objective is to get the best comp plan and zoning for all the city and all the residents. And I would add to that, that the real issue here is, in part, compliance with the Growth Management Act, and I got my little thing back here if I can find it. 3678-020 lists the 12 or so comprehensive plan. I'll just go by memory. It lists the several objectives of the GMA, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. First two, one, densify the cities. Put the density where the facilities and services already are to through the density. And the second one is to avoid sprawl. And frankly, the two proposals you have in front of you right now do neither, and need to be carefully looked at. The other thing I disagree with Alan about is his statement that because you're legislative, you can do just about anything you want here. And this is just going to be terribly confusing for me to do this, so I'll do it quickly. But he's pointing at 20.19.020, procedures involving rezones, and talks about the two types of rezones, and then it says that legislative rezones and quasi-judicial rezones. And what the code also has in it is a section, Part G, Type 5-A. A Type 5-A review process is a quasi-judicial decision made by the city council after recommendation by the Planning Commission. The following are Type 5-A decisions. One, quasi-judicial rezones as described in BMC 20.19.020A2. When you look at what 2019.020A2 says, is that it requires a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan or neighborhood plan. So we have that, and we also have a rezone proposal, and when you add those two together, at least what I'm reading here says it's a Type 5-A and not a Type 6. Now, Alan, I'll admit, it is confusing, okay? So I feel sorry for you having to deal with a very confusing code. Lastly, I gave you, sent you a letter, and it has basically three topics in it. One is the procedural mess you've already heard a lot about. I'd be embarrassed to continue this process. And you know, we haven't said much about the filing fee, but I think if you have a site-specific filing fee under your own rules here, has to be paid. And this is a site-specific rezone. So absent an application, and absent a filing fee, I'm not sure what you have here, frankly. And I hope we really don't have to go find out by pursuing this farther in the event that this actually goes forward in the shape that it's in. The second issue I really wanted to address was, I called it standing, but it's a little more complicated than that, because I've just never seen a situation where a neighbor or a neighborhood group has been allowed to come in and ask for a rezone of their neighbor's property. Honestly, I've been doing this for 42 years, okay? I've never seen it. I spent several hours researching it. I couldn't find a single case or anything that purported to allow that to happen. So I guess it's the first time for everything, maybe, but I was still, I'm still shocked. And I think the reason that that doesn't happen is because the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association doesn't have standing, because the current zoning that's sitting there is not an action, okay? And so in order to have standing, you have to have some sort of action that is going to create injury, in fact, economic or otherwise, by the person who wants to attack that decision. And there's lots of cases that talk about that. So I think that's what I concluded was the most likely reason why we don't see situations like this occur, is because the Neighborhood Association doesn't have standing today to flog a rezone, comprehensive plan change, but it does, of course, have standing to attack a favorable decision on somebody else's comp plan or rezone. And that's quite clear, there are just dozens and dozens and dozens of cases that talk about that. And finally, I mentioned our proposed solution, which is, put this all on the docket in 2014. You clearly have the power to do that under subsection C that Alan was talking about, and I think that would probably be the best use of your power there, to allow everybody to come forward and give you a series of proposals that you can take your pick of or meld them together the way you like. And then finally, there's the economic viability, public interest issue. And you know, building permits, about $30,000 for a single-family house when you count all the fees. I would love to see Mr. Edelstein be able to build some houses for $225,000 he could sell on the marketplace, so that young families, with maybe a child and a dog or whatever, can actually have something that they could afford to buy, even with interest rates as low as they are, it would be a perfect opportunity.
That's nine minutes.
So that's me, and that's what I got to say, and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, next up are Terry and Dan Sherman, followed by Diana Davidson and Mike Sumter. Terry or Dan Sherman? Okay, moving on to Diana Davidson. There's also a microphone up at the top of the stairs you can use, and after Diana will be Mike Sumter, and then Mike Rostron.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm Diana Davidson. I live at 2801 Humboldt Street, and I met some of you at the first meetings for this in 2007. My main concern is I live in that first block right next to this, and I've seen what multifamily housing or higher density does to neighborhoods. The pictures that were shown don't really reflect the houses. Our lot is 80 by 120. It's pretty big, and it's one lot for one house, and our home is about 3,000 square feet. So the person that showed the slideshow was very careful to select small houses, and that's not exactly what our neighborhood is. The other thing is it showed a carriage house. It's actually across the alley from us. It's a neighbor's garage with a playroom. It's not a carriage house or an accessory dwelling unit. The other concern I have is when Edelstein brought his proposal to the neighborhood a few years ago, he didn't provide adequate parking, and the idea was people were going to magically ride their bikes or ride the bus. What really would happen is they would park in our neighborhood in front of our houses. So whatever you decide tonight, or if something comes up, please make sure that it provides for parking. Okay?
Thank you, Diana.
Hello, I'm Mike Sumter, and I live in the Sunnyland Neighborhood at 2801 Humboldt Street. And I understand Dave Edelstein is in business, and he needs to make money, but I also asked the city council to realize this is a great neighborhood, not just a strip mall, you know, apartment complexes, you know, just people pile in and come and go. This is a real residential community, really tight-knit community. As you can see by the number of people here, we care, and we would ask that you take that into consideration to preserve the character and quality of our neighborhood as opposed to maximizing some numbers in some plan somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Rostron, followed by Christopher Granis.
Thank you, city council, for having us tonight. I'd like to point out one thing that I caught in the discussion earlier. Oh, I'm Mike Rostron. I live on Maryland Street in the Sunnyland Neighborhood. I'd like to point out that the DOT, four acres, is a sub-area. It may or may not be a site-specific, but it is a sub-area. Therefore, this body definitely has the authority to rezone it as they please, according to their judgment. I'm going to read a little bit from something I will give you a copy of here. Sunnyland Neighborhood has been struggling for years to get our zoning proposal for the Department of Transportation subarea docketed. Regarding neighborhood densities, zoning decisions, and the use of the infill toolkit, as the old saying goes, "The devil is in the details." The most important detail to consider is where the infill should take place in each neighborhood. Neither the developers nor the city's planning staff should be the only parties to make such decisions, yet this is what seems to be going on regarding the site in Sunnyland. The Neighborhood Association's reform to advise city leaders on just such issues, yet their recommendations are often ignored, belittled, or cast aside. Certain members of the council and planning department have accused us of having a more limited comprehension of city development. In fact, the reverse is the case. Our vision for our neighborhood, as well as the city of Bellingham, is one of responsible stewardship of the historic character and assets of existing neighborhoods, along with deliberate and well-considered infill in areas of the city which desire it. We urge those members of the council and planning department to walk the streets of Sunnyland Neighborhood and note the profusion of verdant yards and gardens, the large percentage of older and well-maintained homes, houses in the process of improvement, the children playing in the yards and quiet streets, and the semi-rural character of Sunnyland, especially north of Alabama Street. The directors of- The directors of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association and the residents of Sunnyland Neighborhood are not against responsible infill. Infill has yet to become a dirty word. But if it continues to be used as a euphemism for shoving undesired and ill-conceived development down the throat of residents in neighborhoods that do not desire it, or in areas within neighborhoods where it is appropriate, rest assured, the word and the very concept of infill will become anathema to the citizens of Bellingham. If city leaders and Planning Department employees do not wish to fight a case-by-case battle with each new proposal bought by developers, they should start listening to and supporting the wishes of the residents and property owners in the neighborhoods they represent. Neighborhood leaders are motivated by a high code of ethics. They wish to preserve and enhance the neighborhoods where they live, and thereby preserve and augment the unique character of Bellingham in general. They see beyond mere profit or the latest development fads and fashions. Neighborhood residents' concerns should have priority. The developer is only one of many property owners, and their wishes should have no more weight than any other property owner who might want to change zoning of their individual parcel to a higher density. Preservation of historic neighborhoods and homes must be paramount in Bellingham. Infill should be of secondary importance. The rights and wishes of those who live here should come before the nebulous and projected rights of those who may or may not move here in the future, enticed by "build it and they will come" corporate marketing schemes. There are several areas of Bellingham that desire additional density, and those areas should be the test areas for the infill toolkit or similar proposals before they are even considered in neighborhoods with objections. Finally, the citizens of Sunnyland Neighborhood and the Board have made it clear these past several years, they do not wish the toolkit to be utilized at the former DOT site, and that we favor development consistent with the current neighborhood character, that is, single-family, medium-density. Our proposal would certainly qualify as infill, as 28 homes could be built where presently none exist. In addition, each of these new homes could include a legally permitted attached dwelling unit for a total of 56 new dwelling units. The SNA and hundreds of Sunnyland residents participated in good faith through many hours, weeks, and months of meetings with developers, the Planning Department, the city planning consultants, and after much consideration and discussion, came up with an appropriate proposal for the site, which was subsequently docketed in 2007. Without further consideration, notice, or discussion with the neighborhood residents, those hours of volunteer and paid city employee time were dismissed, and our proposal was removed. City Council members, we respectfully request once again that you give this proposal the serious consideration which it deserves, and we ask the following of you. Do you support preserving the character of Bellingham's various historic neighborhoods? Will you stand with the citizens of Bellingham, whose homes represent most of their net worth and lifetimes of labor, hopes, and dreams? And finally, are you willing to defend the residents from the practices of developers out to make a profit regardless of the impact to city neighborhoods and residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Christopher Granis. Hey, folks, no. No, thank you. We don't applaud or boo here, so that everyone can feel welcome and like they can share their opinion freely. Thank you.
I am Christopher Granis, 701 Chuckano Drive North. I live in the South Neighborhood. And I'm here to support the request of the neighborhood to docket their proposal. I kind of wonder why I'm here, because it was docketed some years ago already, and that we have to go through this process again illustrates a problem of trust. Are the neighbors in the neighborhood who had their proposal docketed once going to I think there's already been a loss of trust, because they're having to go through this again. I know that in our neighborhood, our experience with the Planning Department is that they facilitate maximum-density development without regard to neighborhood input or concerns or the environment. We don't trust. And so, for that reason, I would urge you to docket once again the neighborhood proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this subject before we have Patrick back cleanup here? Anyone else? Come forward now. Go ahead. And please introduce yourself at the mic.
Good evening. My name is Judith Green. I don't have a lot to say. I think I've said it all. I've written letters, written an article, spoken before you, written letters. And I would like to see who's here who supports the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan. Please raise your hand. Thank you. I think that's all I'm going to say, except that 28 houses is infill. So, if you want infill, there it is. And I'd say, I don't know, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Anyone else who would like to speak before? Okay, last one up there at the mic.
How about I stay here? My voice is loud enough. No, you gotta get on the mic.
Yeah, sorry, we've got a TV audience out there. You could introduce yourself.
My name's Chris Collins. I moved over to 2714 Iron Street about six years ago from some friends of mine that had their daughter and outgrew the house. I purchased it based upon the fact that it's a single-family dwelling neighborhood, the whole area. New neighbors came in to my right and seemed like great folks, single family. First thing they did was put a new porch in the side of the house that looks over my living room. It now became a multifamily dwelling. They put two units upstairs. The neighborhood changed from there. In the last month and a half, two months, there's been two thefts in my house, two break-ins, the second one I took care of. That's just from folks visiting my neighbor's house, folks that came in traffic, so to speak. All of a sudden, there's a view into my living room. My concern is, if my neighbor, who I'm being nice to and not naming, can put in a multifamily dwelling, and that affects my home within one year's period of time, I'm concerned. That's all.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, Patrick McKee.
Patrick McKee, 2801 Grant Street in the beautiful Sunnyland Neighborhood. In the presentation made by planning staff, there is an emphasis to say that the Sunnyland proposal and the Planning Department proposal are similar proposals. I don't believe that to be true. Both the Sunnyland proposal and the Planning Department proposal have two parts. The first part of each proposal is a change to the comprehensive plan. That's where the neighborhood plan resides. And in the SubArea 8 of the Sunnyland Neighborhood, which we're talking about tonight, the Planning Department would note that the zoning for this subarea is multifamily. The Sunnyland proposal refers in the comprehensive plan to a single-family subarea. When you have a multifamily designation in the comprehensive plan that says multifamily, you're signaling to future planning departments that it was intended that this area be developed for multifamily. Then, when you step outside of the comprehensive plan and you go to the zoning table, the Planning Department puts in a duplex use qualifier, and they say, "Well, that permits only single-family houses, duplexes, cottage houses, carriage houses, accessory dwelling units, and cottage houses." The thing that they don't emphasize is that someone using that zoning is not required to build one single-family detached house. The entire site could be developed with duplexes, if the developer so chose. The Planning Department also says in their staff report that this proposal that they're putting forward is the minimum required to meet comprehensive plan goals. They are signaling to me, and I hope you can hear it, that they intend in the near future to up the density on this site. They could do that with a simple code change outside of the comprehensive plan. One thing they could do would be to remove the restrictions on infill toolkit housing from the duplex area, from the duplex use qualifier, which now has restrictions. You could add in all of the toolkit housing forms, which do include apartment buildings. And so, that landscape on the DOT site would not be as cute as the pictures that were shown tonight. You'd have triplexes. You'd have courtyard apartment buildings. I think that's the direction the future will produce if you put multifamily zoning into the Sunnyland comprehensive plan. That is why, from the very beginning, the Neighborhood Association has insisted upon single-family zoning for this area. That has been our goal. We do not want to introduce multifamily zoning into this area. The Planning Department in their presentation said that it would be costly to create new design standards, as we call for in our comprehensive plan narrative description. We have already made a compromise because of their concerns about the expense and staff time. We had said two years ago that we would be willing to use already established design guidelines that are contained in 2028. We would use the building descriptions and design guidelines for the small house and for the smaller house, and we would borrow that language and insert it into the special regulations column of the Sunnyland zoning table. The Planning Department presentation also emphasized the attached housing in the Sunnyland plan. Currently, the Sunnyland proposal is strictly a single-family detached proposal. We do say, though, that in the future, if the city creates a new attached use qualifier for the single-family general use, that we would permit attached housing along Sunset Drive. But currently, there is no such provision in the city code that I know of. So, our proposal is a single-family detached home proposal. Another thing that the staff did not point out is that the detached ADUs that they would be permitting in their alternative proposal, and the carriage houses permitted in their alternative proposal, they're not counted as dwelling units. Only the primary residences are counted as dwelling units. So, if you had 35 units on the site, and some or many of the units had carriage houses over their garages or detached ADUs on their property, the dwelling unit count from the Planning Department proposal could be considerably higher than 35 on that site. There is this question of owner signature requirement for the Sunnyland application. That came up long ago. It came up in 2011, when our application was working its way through the public process. The Planning Director pointed out that we did not have owner signature for our proposal. We were required to go to the City Council with our application and ask that the City Council give us docketing consideration, and that's how we got on to the docket. That's how we got a docketing hearing. First, we had to have a 7-0 City Council vote just to get a docketing hearing. And then, finally, we were docketed in July of 2012. Mr. Adelstein seemed to be indicating that we are pressuring him to build something on this site, and he's not ready to do so. I respect that. We are not asking him to build anything. All we are trying to do is establish zoning for the site, appropriate zoning for the site. Temporary default zoning has been imposed on that site for seven years. The 20,000-square-foot lots are not in compliance with the State's Growth Management Act. You cannot create new 20,000-square-foot lots in a city like Bellingham. That zoning needs to be changed, and we are trying to establish appropriate private-use zoning on that site. We're not asking Dave or Greg to build anything. We just want to put some zoning in place on that site. And we do think seven years is long enough to wait. People living in a neighborhood are entitled to some certainty as to what can take place on this site. And that's why we would like you to act tonight. And we think, as is often in these cases, when public use land is transferred to private ownership, the most common approach by the City Council is to zone the land similar to the surrounding zoning. And that's what we are asking to do.
That's nine minutes.
Once, I just had a neighbor here at this meeting point out to me that, once a SEPA statement is accepted by the SEPA official, it doesn't make any difference if there's flaws in that statement that are later found out. Once it's accepted by the SEPA official, it's a done deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm going to bring the, I'm going to close the oral sec. We will probably keep the written comment open. We'll get to that. So, right now, we're going to close this portion of the public hearing, and I'll turn it back over to the Council. Are any questions or comments, or what is the will of the Council? Gene?
Clarification. It was mentioned at the beginning that we wouldn't be voting tonight, and we wouldn't be sending it to committee. Would it be sent to the Planning Community Development Committee?
Just the Planning Committee.
I mean, the Planning Committee on the Fourth of August? And what are we sending to that committee? I've heard tonight, Sunnyland Neighborhood Association Plan, David has come up with something, Staff Plan. What are we going to be looking at? Because here's the problem I see happening. And, you know, I usually don't debate lawyers, but Mr. Swanson kind of catched me a little bit here when he said, "Just docket all three of them for 2014, for 2015." Well, we've already been there and done that, so I don't want to see that. So, I think we need to be specific of what we're looking at on the Fourth of August. Is it the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan? Is it the Staff Plan? Or what in the hell is it?
Terry?
Excuse my language.
I would like to propose that we send the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan to the Planning Committee to start their work. You can take it from there, look at other ones, but at least we've got one before the Planning Committee to start work with. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Jack?
Terry, I, what I, whatever they want. To me, it seems like it's the entire packet that we received in our agenda packet today. That's what we should be considering. I mean, there's a wealth of material in there of both the Neighborhood Plan and the Staff Proposal.
Just those.
Just those two. We're not dealing with the owners, because they have yet to submit something, and they didn't, you know, they've had the opportunity all year long to go and submit something, but they... something, but they didn't interject that into the process earlier on. So to me, it seems like it's those two that we should be considering for discussion at the committee level, and it's going to come up anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So to me, it just seems like it'd be better just to go and take, you know, what we have here and deliberate on that and come up with a recommendation to the full council.
Sorry, I didn't see it. Must have been on the wrong list. I called for extra, yeah. So is that an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Are you interested in that, Terry?
I will withdraw it if that's what you just want to consider, but that's what my preference is, is we start with the Sunnylands because they put so much work into it, brought it forward.
Well, Terry does have a legitimate point, and I'm not blaming anybody sitting in this room tonight as far as the staff level goes, because I don't play those games. But when this all started two planning directors ago, a lot of promises were made, and a lot of things happened, and it's put us in this situation tonight. And I don't want anybody in this room to feel that the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association has done anything wrong, because they did exactly what we asked them to do, and now we're in this room. So I want to be as fair to them as I possibly can. I know where the staff's coming from. They always try to come up with alternative plans, but I kind of agree with Terry that, I don't know, I think, Terry, if you don't mind, I think the Neighborhood Association deserves an up or down vote on this.
I'll keep it up.
And I'm not trying to put any pressure on anybody, but they have been through seven years of hell, and I would like to ask a question before we vote on that. If we were to go ahead, Greg, and just do the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan, and other than suing us, what would David's plan, how could he come forward with something, say, in a few months from now?
Well, as the property owner, he could submit a request to change the zoning.
At any time.
Go through the docketing process, and you would ultimately decide whether or not it gets considered.
Okay, so, yes, Alan?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize, regardless of what goes to the Planning Committee on August 4th, and I just want to repeat what Greg has said, is that really what has to happen on August 4th is not that just that the Planning Committee consider the matter, but that council in the evening vote first and second on something.
Right.
Because third and final in all the comp plan amendments occurs on August 11th.
Right.
So it's a really tight timeframe, so I just want to be really clear what that timeframe is.
Michael?
I'm concerned about us reaching a bad decision with this shortened timeframe. I have a raft of technical legal questions, and then I have some more conceptual questions. I don't feel prepared to vote on anything, and that's kind of funny, because actually, I've been hanging around this process for six years, and I've seen us just a hair's breadth apart from each other, 28 units, 34 units. For all six of those years, my feeling all along has been that there's a solution really close by. And so you think maybe, I think, I know, big deal, I'll just pick one, it's not too far from the other. But I take my responsibility seriously enough to fear that there are some landlines embedded in one proposal or another of legal sorts, of other sorts. I don't, I'm really concerned about a hurried vote, certainly not tonight. I think compressing it to the next two meetings also worries me.
We have a motion and a second to refer the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan to the Planning Committee. Is there any further discussion? I guess I'll speak. I am with you, Michael, on this one. Boy, did we create a nice cluster for ourselves. I just, and I'm sorry to delay, but we'll be slow speaking. And I know the frustration is mounting, you know, with every passing year, this one. But we're not at the right solution. I'm done. Terry, and then Jack.
Couple of things. One, my proposal is just to send it over because Jean was asking, "What do you want?" You know, "What do you want sent?" So it's an idea, the Planning Committee will discuss the whole realm of things and discuss it with. We're not going to come up with, regardless of what this council does, we are not going to come up with the proposal of what's going to be built there. The owner will. Right now, I mean, we've been doing this for seven years. We're talking about hurry the process. Hurry the process, my God. You know, we have heard all these, all these different variations for years, and it's just been going over and over with it. And yes, you know, we, Patrick was right. The council is the one that asked this one to be brought forward. We're asked to be hurried, but we're not the ones that put it in the position. We've been asking, "When is this coming back? When is this coming back?" Now it's back, and staff is saying, "Oh, we got to deal with this in two weeks." Well, we're going to really try, and I think we need to try, because we owe it to the people that have worked on this so hard to do that. And, you know, so I, please, you know, we feel the same thing here as everybody else. Everyone, we want everyone to have a chance to speak and feel safe with it. But that's where I'm at with it, you know? Yes, we need to work hard with that, because we owe it. The council aren't the ones that waited this long to put it on. So, but we're the ones that are going to have to work real hard to try to come up with something. So that's where I'm at with it.
Jack?
Well, I guess the issue is that we're going to have a 90-minute meeting on, you know, assuming this passes, we'll have a 90-minute meeting on August 4th, and whether or not we're going to be able to work through the issues, have everybody's comments addressed and questions answered. That might happen, and if it doesn't, then I guess we can go and continue it into the afternoon, we can continue it into the evening. I'm not sure how that's going to work with trying to come up with a first and second language and be able to, you know, unless it's a real straightforward solution. But if we end up amending it, and we're really good at doing that, it's going to be a little bit more complicated.
But maybe your committee will surprise you and come up with something.
I hope so. I trust my committee.
Well, okay, so we could refer this Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan to the Planning Committee with full knowledge that they have one meeting to accomplish their goal, and if they fail to do so, they fail to do so, and it won't pass muster at the committee, the whole council level. Pinky.
Can I just clarify? So what happens if we don't come to some sort of resolution on the Fourth and on the 11th? It has to be passed, so does it just get rolled over another year? How, what does that mean?
So I talked to Greg. The other option is we're all, we've set up to do all our third and finals on our comp plan amendments on August 11th. We could, there is no reason that's, that we couldn't push that day back to another council meeting, a later council meeting, which would give more time, but it's backing up all the other comprehensive plan amendments. So that August 11th date could be pushed back.
Just to clarify, pushed back to a yet unscheduled August meeting during our break?
So to, and Greg, speak up if I misspeak, but to a September meeting?
Okay.
September 8th is what would be our next one.
Roxanne.
Boy, oh, boy, did I inherit quite a mess when I got elected in January. I have so many mixed and conflicting thoughts on this. I live in Sunnyland, 2025 Iron Street. I love my single-family home. I love everything about our neighborhood. I want to see it preserved also. At the same time, my background is in economic development, and I see how this process can work so much better than what every single person who is here tonight has been through, and that is extremely frustrating to me, because I feel like it was led in the inappropriate way. I'm so grateful for all of your input, and I'm so grateful for all of you being here. I just wish it could have worked like this, where the people who own the property know what will pencil on their property, they know what will work, and then they work with the community, and they try to come up with some mid-range solutions. Then they are the ones who are the applicant for any zoning changes, and then the community has even more opportunity to provide input to those zoning changes. So I'm stuck in a cattywampus feeling now, and I know that's not what we're deciding right now, but it's why I'm really uncomfortable with this, because I feel like my job is to try to be fair to everybody as the at-large representative. So I'm going to decide in a second.
Terry.
Yeah. Roxanne, just a little bit of history. We attempted to do that. We specifically said for the property owner and the neighborhoods that, "Please go out, try to work this through, come back, otherwise you're probably all going to get something, there's a good chance you might all get something you don't want." And we've done this twice with exactly what you've proposed. We have done that, and that's why it's taken all this while, and now it's back to this. So we have, you know, yeah, we, Jean and I have already went through that process, and so that's why we're, you know.
You know what? I'm sorry, Dave, we've started our deliberations, so we can't take more input. I'm going to suggest, I don't think that I personally believe in plans coming from other than the city for something like the waterfront that's a large parcel changing zoning or the property owner, but for the sake of moving this process forward and for everything that's been gone through to this point, I'm, I think I'm going to vote in support of referring the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan to the Planning Committee, knowing full well that they have a short timeframe to try and do their work, but let's see what you can produce. Michael?
Just point of order. Did we do the proper thing of closing the hearing but leaving the written record open? Do we have to do that before this referral motion? We did do that part?
Well, I closed the speaking portion of the public hearing.
Okay, and the written record is still open?
We haven't closed the written record.
Does it matter when we do that? You can do it after?
We have a resolution that the written record remains open until final consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
And that's third and final final consideration, right?
Well, whatever the public hearing is on, sometimes it's an ordinance and sometimes it's something else, but.
But to be clear, the written record will remain open as this goes to committee if we refer it to committee. Right. So anyone who didn't feel like they got their chance to speak or they have more to say, definitely submit comments. Anything else before I call the question? Okay.
I don't want Pinky to come back. You might go ahead and vote. I don't know what's going on.
I guess, yeah, I'm going to call the vote. Okay, so all those in favor of referring the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan to the Planning Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0 with Vargas out of the room. Okay. Thank you, everybody. We're going to take a short break to allow for folks to leave if they want to before we start the next public hearings. It'll be about five minutes.
I mean, this was happening. I mean, this was happening.
We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We have two more public hearings this evening. And hopefully, and the first is also a comp plan amendment item and the second one is for the emergency marijuana ordinance. So, we'll start with the public hearing to consider two requests to docket comprehensive plan amendments for review in the 2014-15 City Work Program. State law allows cities to amend their comprehensive plans once a year. The first step in the amendment process is to establish the list or docket of amendment proposals that will be reviewed in the upcoming year. The council establishes the docket after conducting a public hearing and considering the recommendations of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on June ninth, excuse me, June nineteenth of this year to review the two requests and recommends docketing both of them for review in the 2014-15 City Work Program. And I'll turn it over to Greg and Lisa.
Thank you, Greg. Ockert Planning Department. We have two proposals asking, seeking to be placed on the docket for the next cycle of review. They're both from the property owners. Thank goodness, right?
Thank you, Greg.
As Kathy said, the Planning Commission reviewed these and recommended both, both staff and the Planning Commission recommended that these be docketed. They, we felt they met the criteria and Lisa Poole is here to give you more of the details.
Good evening. Lisa Poole, Senior Planner at the Planning Office. I'm here to go over the two applications that we've received for the 2014-2015 docket application process. And as has been stated, this is a two-step process. The first step is to establish the docket or the annual list of comprehensive plan amendments. And then step two is to analyze those proposals through a separate legislative process, which means public hearings before the Planning Commission and the City Council. I just wanted to highlight the review criteria that the city uses when reviewing these applications. All the applications must meet criterion A and one of the criteria under B. So, I won't read those, but just wanted to highlight that this is review criteria specific to the docket applications. The first proposal is in the Samish neighborhood and it is a request to amend the Samish Neighborhood Plan Area One to rezone 1.62 acres from commercial auto to commercial planned. This was submitted by AVT Consulting on behalf of the property owner. If approved, applications for a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a rezone will be submitted. The change would allow the full range of uses under the commercial planned zone, which includes mixed uses. Staff finds this proposal does meet the docket criteria, including the availability of staff to review the proposal within the year timeframe. And it serves the public interest to review this vacant property to determine if the existing zoning is appropriate for it. I did wanna note that due to miscommunication between staff and the applicant, this application was submitted after the April 1st deadline. Under the advisement of our city attorney, we went ahead and took that application in, but we do wanna make sure that everyone's clear on the fact that this was submitted after the April 1st deadline. And it is up to council as to whether or not you want to accept this application. Staff and the Planning Commission recommended docketing this particular proposal. The second application is also in the Samish neighborhood and this is a request to amend the Samish Neighborhood Plan in Area Nine from planned non-retail commercial to commercial planned. And this also would open up the uses for this site to the full range of uses in the commercial planned zoning district, including mixed uses. Staff finds the proposal meets the docketing criteria, including the availability of staff to review the proposal within the year timeframe, as well as it serves the public interest to review whether this vacant property, the existing zoning is appropriate for it. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend docketing this proposal with the condition that this small sliver right here to the north of the submitted site also be included with the rezone application. It is owned by a different property owner, the Elks, and obviously, they would need to be on board with that and sign a property owner authorization authorizing the existing applicant to submit that with the rezone. It doesn't make sense to leave this small slither out there with the non-retail restriction on it. I also wanted to note that in your packet, you will see a request to include the church property across the street in this docket application. It has not been evaluated by staff nor has an application been submitted for this property, but council can docket any item at any time. So, I know that the owner of this property, as well as the folks who wanna buy it, are here tonight and they will plead their case on whether or not you should include that. So, with that, I just wanted to show a map with the two proposals, where they are in relation to one another. As I say, they're both in the Samish neighborhood and we just had two applications this year. So, I know that AVT Consulting is here to follow up with the presentation of their own. Questions?
Jack?
Well, Lisa, do we have a specific timeline or deadline to make a decision associated with the docketing?
Well, to make a decision associated with the docketing?
Yeah, I mean, if we choose not to decide tonight, are you looking at next meeting, the meeting after, or is it kind of an open-ended thing?
It, there is no deadline. There's no statutory deadline for establishing the docket.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify what my understanding is.
Terry?
The change in zoning from non-retail to commercial planned, that opens it up to retail?
Correct, correct, right. There's a, no, it opens it up to the full uses under the planned commercial.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking is that, which includes retail, but it doesn't now.
Yes, yes.
Because I know some people ask, they don't necessarily know what that designation always means.
Right, yes.
What's currently sitting on those properties right now?
Nothing, trees. It's a wooded area, yes. I shouldn't say nothing. I mean, there, there is, it is a heavily wooded site, yes.
Michael?
Lisa, other than, if we consider this proposal, other than adding retail kinds of commercial, what are the other new uses that might be allowed? I'm assuming residential. And would the height limits or bulk limits change with the zoning change? Would that be part of the consideration?
I have a list of the uses. I can go grab it. So, uses that are allowed in planned commercial include offices, retail, libraries, personal services, commercial rec facilities, eating and drinking establishments, public uses, private clubs, institutions of higher education, motels, minor auto repair, daycare, apartments in conjunction with other uses, that's the mixed uses, and a few others.
What about the scale of the development? And what I'm trying to figure out is, it probably could do with improved zoning, but I wouldn't wanna open the box to what might actually be harmful possible use. You know, fireworks factory obviously would be a bad idea. That wouldn't be allowed. But what are the ranges of uses you've just said and how about the bulk that might be considered if we did docket this?
As far as the bulk, I'm not, I don't have the code in front of me.
Those would be issues that we would analyze in the process and we could, you know, provide you with a side-by-side comparison of the differences, but it's my understanding that, I mean, it's commercial planned now, so all of the planned land use regulations apply now. The only change is to the retail component. So, all of those uses that Lisa just listed would be allowed now. It's only the retail component that would be changing. That's my understanding.
Jack?
It looks like to me that the park and ride is actually two different zones. One's commercial auto and one's commercial planned. Number one and two. Oh, wait a minute, no, it's all one.
Yeah, it's all one. It's the property just above the park and ride.
Right, yeah, here's the park and ride right here.
Okay.
And then on this map, it's all in red.
And one is commercial auto. Is there, is there an interest, I think by the university, of having it also be because of what they potentially would convert that property to? Because it doesn't have to be just a parking lot. I mean, there's been thoughts about.
Well, yeah, auto-commercial allows a range of uses as well, not just a parking lot. But no, the university hasn't expressed any interest in changing the zoning on that property at this point in time.
But they could build, they could build housing. That what they couldn't do is they couldn't do retail on it. It's only.
I'm not sure that even housing is allowed in auto-retail. I don't believe that it is. It's not.
Okay.
So, any kind of mixed-use development on that site in the future would require new zoning?
And I do wanna mention, I mean, this type of discussion is what would take place, obviously, with the rezone application. And I mean, what we're trying to focus on with these are the review criteria for the docket. So, we don't wanna get too far off that path, but.
Well, it's establishing the right, the right boundaries, too. So, and that would be one of the things that you'd look at is to see whether or not some of the adjacent properties are, should be included into it? Or is that decisions that you want made as part of the docketing process?
Well, I mean, the specific request that was made for additional property to be included, like I said, that this church across the street for Area Nine, and the folks are here to speak to you on that.
Okay.
Let's continue.
Is that good?
So, is that it?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Yep. Anything else from staff?
Not at this time.
Any other questions from council before we open up the public hearing? Okay, see none? Can we go ahead and open the public hearing? If I call your name, please come up and introduce yourself.
Did you wanna hear from the applicants first?
Well, yeah, that's part of the presentation.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Okay.
I didn't sign up. I talked to staff and they indicated that we could just have a chance to talk before.
Okay, great.
So, if that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name is Ali Taishi, 1708 F Street in Bellingham, and I'm here representing the applicants for both of these proposals, actually. So, if I may, I'd like to speak about one for a couple of minutes and then switch gears to the other one. And then if there's questions similar to the questions you've asked staff, I could answer on both topics. But I'd like to start by talking about the Samish proposal, which is the one that you see on the board right now. And we do believe it meets the docketing criteria. We've seen a lot of public comment regarding this proposal. A lot of the public comment has been about things like traffic impacts and height and other development regulations and what a specific development might mean for this property. And some of the analysis from the public comment has actually talked about the specific rezone and comp plan amendment criteria that are contained in 2019-030 and 2020-040. And I just wanna reiterate what Lisa said, which is this is not the forum to discuss those criteria and that the council should not be judging this docket request on those criteria. We should be looking at the docketing criteria, which are different and are in 2020-030. So, it's a completely different set of criteria. Lisa spoke to that and I just wanna reiterate that because you may hear public comment about specific things that are really not related to where, what we're doing tonight. I don't wanna lose track of that. I think that's very important. Specific to the proposal that came in, we saw the letter that came in for the church property across the street. We are not, that is not a part of our application. We have no opinion on that and would leave it to the council to make a decision about that. But what I would ask is that you don't prejudice your review of our proposal that was made in compliance with the, with the docketing dates and criteria and evaluate what we've proposed on the merits of what we've proposed, independent from that proposal. If you choose to add that, that's at your discretion, but we would request that you just evaluate our proposal on its own merits. In regards to the use of the site, the property's been vacant as long as I've been in Bellingham. I've been in Bellingham for 34 years. I was, I was born here and there's a reason it's been for sale for at least 15 years and that's because the non-retail restriction that exists today has really limited the uses that you can, that you can, the things you can do with this site. So, you've only got nine or 10 different things you can do. And what we've seen over the years is that the commercial development in our community in this area has shifted to the west side of the freeway. When this property was zoned with a non-realtor restriction, the Seum Village was not fully developed. The urban village at Samish was not planned. There was a drive-in. And so, the community, I believe, thought that auto-oriented uses or, pardon me, commercial type uses would be more appropriate on the side of the freeway. What we've seen over the years, that has not happened. The area's built out with more residential uses. So, the applicant is interested in building residential development on this site in conjunction with commercial development. That is only permitted in the planned commercial zone without this restriction. So, this restriction stops the applicant from engaging in mixed-use development on the site. And so, you know, that might speak to Councilmember Loquist or Wyss's questions. That's where we're going with this proposal. We don't have any intent to change the development regulations, the height, the setbacks or any of those other things that would apply in the regular planned commercial zoning. So, we're not asking to change that. We're just asking to remove that non-realtor retail restriction. And I know that there's been concern about retail development in this area and the impacts that retail development does produce. There is no intent to engage in retail-type uses on the property. So, if there is some concern ultimately when we get into this discussion, if this proposal is docketed, about retail uses and some form of retail restriction is still included, we don't have a problem with that. What we're trying to do is open up a broader range of office and mixed-use uses for the site. And we believe this is consistent with several of the docketing criteria. So, that's all I'd like to say about the Samish proposal. If I could speak for a minute about the Ashley Street proposal and.
Arrow down.
Arrow down. Oh, so, there we go. So, very similar situation with Ashley Street. This property has an auto qualifier. Auto qualifier in the commercial zone does not permit mixed uses. It does not permit residential development. It permits a limited number of auto-oriented commercial uses. It's very clear that auto-oriented commercial uses are not appropriate for this property. There's no auto-oriented uses on this street. Driving traffic for commercial auto-oriented purposes up Byron toward the neighborhood is not appropriate and. because you may hear public comment about specific things that are really not related to where, what we're doing tonight. I don't want to lose track of that, I think that's very important. Specific to the proposal that came in, we saw the letter that came in for the church property across the street. We are not, that is not a part of our application. We have no opinion on that and would leave it to the council to make a decision about that. But what I would ask is that you don't prejudice your review of our proposal that was made in compliance with the, with the docketing dates and criteria and evaluate what we've proposed on the merits of what we've proposed, independent from that proposal. If you choose to add that, that's at your discretion, but we would request that you just evaluate our proposal on its own merits. In regards to the use of the site, the property's been vacant as long as I've been in Bellingham. I've been in Bellingham for 34 years. I was, I was born here and there's a reason it's been for sale for at least 15 years. And that's because the non-retail restriction that exists today has really limited the uses that you can, that you can, the things you can do with the site. So you've only got nine or 10 different things you can do. And what we have seen over the years is that the commercial development in our community in this area has shifted to the west side of the freeway. When this property was zoned with a non-rental restriction, the Seum Village was not fully developed, the urban village at Samish was not planned. There was a drive-in. And so the community, I believe, thought that auto-oriented uses or, pardon me, commercial-type uses would be more appropriate on the side of the freeway. What we've seen over the years, that has not happened. The area is built out with more residential uses. So the applicant is interested in building residential development on this site in conjunction with commercial development. That is only permitted in the planned commercial zone without this restriction. So this restriction stops the applicant from engaging in mixed-use development on the site. And so, you know, that might speak to Councilmember Loquist or Wyss's questions. That's, that's where we're going with this proposal. We don't have any intent to change the development regulations, the height, the setbacks or any of those other things that would apply in the regular planned commercial zoning. So we're not asking to change that, we're just asking to remove that non-rental restriction. And I know that there's been concern about retail development in this area and the impacts that retail development does produce. There is no intent to engage in retail-type uses on the property. So if there is some concern ultimately when we get into this discussion, if this proposal is docketed about retail uses and some form of retail restriction is still included, we don't have a problem with that. What we're trying to do is open up a broader range of office and mixed-use uses for the site. And we believe this is consistent with several of the docketing criteria. So that's all I'd like to say about the Samish proposal. If I could speak for a minute about the Ashley Street proposal and? Arrow down. So there we go. So very similar situation with Ashley Street. This property has an auto qualifier. Auto qualifier in the commercial zone does not permit mixed uses. It does not permit residential development. It permits a limited number of auto-oriented commercial uses. It's very clear that auto-oriented commercial uses are not appropriate for this property. There's no auto-oriented uses on this street. Driving traffic for commercial auto-oriented purposes up Byron toward the neighborhood is not appropriate. And similar to the Samish proposal, the applicants for this proposal, who are entirely different individuals, are interested in engaging in a mixed-use or residential-type development, which would be permitted with the regular planned commercial designation, not the auto designation. So it's a similar situation. Also similarly, this property sat vacant for a very long time because of the existing zoning designation that is applied to it. So for that reason, we believe it does meet several of these docketing criteria and it does warrant a change in zone. Again, the details of that zone designation, the development regulations, all those things can be worked through with staff, the neighborhood, if this is docketed, but we surely don't need to get into those details today. And I would also like to speak briefly to the issue that came up with our application coming in after the April 1st deadline, just so you have direct knowledge. I was involved in that process directly. We came in and met with staff in advance of that date specifically to discuss the process. Staff and myself and the property owner went through the zoning text and we were given direction from staff that this would not require a comprehensive plan amendment. So we were directed to apply for a pre-application meeting for site-specific rezone. And we did that prior to the April 1st deadline. And then our meeting was scheduled after that deadline. And at the meeting, pre-application meeting, we were told that staff identified through a more thorough review of the neighborhood plan that there's language in the neighborhood plan itself that needs to be revised. And at that time, they said this actually needs to be a comprehensive plan amendment, which would have triggered the April 1st deadline. So it was not, it was a, I would say it was an error, you know, on the part of staff and ourselves not thoroughly getting into that. But we did take direction from the city on that. And we don't believe that that should be a reason to deny review or docketing of this proposal. It wasn't something that was done with ill intention by any means at all. We made every attempt to comply with the, with the appropriate process. So I guess in closing, I'd just like to say we really think that when you review the docketing criteria that are applicable at this stage, you will clearly see that both of these proposals meet several of those criteria. We're looking forward to engaging with the neighborhood. We've already had one neighborhood meeting with the neighborhood at the Elks Lodge and because it was convenient and got a lot of feedback. And we're looking forward to the opportunity to continue that dialogue and find a way to get these properties zoned so that we can actually get some appropriate level of development on instead of leaving them vacant for the next 20 years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ali. Okay.
Scott?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Hi, Scott Swanson. I represented the both applications at the planning commission level. I'm really only here to address one issue because Ali handled the rest of it, and that's the timing issue. So that's in regards to Ashley Street properties. And I just wanted to point out that one resident has complained that the application was not timely. The matter was referred to the city attorney's office and Alan did opine on it. I do agree with Alan's analysis and did put that in a letter that was in the planning commission packet. Basically, my analysis is that BMC Section 2110-150B1B states the following. All docket requests should be submitted no later than April 1st of each year. You know, there's a legal analysis regarding the words shall and should. Should provides flexibility in this case. So it is proper that this was docketed after the April 1 deadline. I also did look at some other past history and there are times when there has been docketing that has occurred after the April 1 deadline. So this is not the first time. So that's really the only issue I'm, I'm here to address. Oh, I did want to just mention that is consistent with the Growth Management Act as well, which really, you know, if you summarize those provisions, it just requires that, you know, cities are supposed to plan and consider the comprehensive plan amendments, you know, once a year. So, but the procedure that goes through is really the city. So again, I think it's proper that this was docketed, so.
Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I thought I said that, Scott Swanson, 900 Dupont Street.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so any other representative from the property owners who would like to speak? No? Okay, seeing none. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. There are seven people here, so we start with Dick Conneboy, followed by Ron Young and Simi Jane. If you could come up and introduce yourself and share your feelings with us, that would be fabulous.
Do you really want me to share my feelings?
No, not your feelings.
So nice of you.
Share your opinion.
I see some heads nodding negatively. My name is Dick Conneboy. I live on South 46th Street in the Samish neighborhood. I'm also on the Samish Board, but I'm not here speaking tonight to, as a representative of the Board. I want to speak first about the Ashley rezone. And I think there are some of you here who were here in 2004 when this went, underwent a request for zoning to residential multi and that was voted down. And since then, things in that neighborhood have degraded. It's getting worse there and I'll tell you why. Because this should be consistent with the Growth Management Act said, which says that the neighborhood character should be maintained. And I submit the rezone will violate the express requirement of the GMA to maintain the character of the neighborhoods. We had this rezone request in 2004, at which time the developer wanted to place a 60-plus unit apartment building with over 100 parking spots. Even with the rejection of this poorly planned development, in the intervening decade, the neighborhood has already begun to deteriorate with the percentage of ownership, owner-occupied homes on 41st, 42nd, 43rd, 44th Streets, as well as the adjacent homes on Byron and Consolidation, falling to approximately 66%. As the original owners continue to flee the problems with noise, parking, parties and overcrowding. Now, I was the one, I went through every property record to determine whether or not it looked like it was a rental, that is, whether the address differed, the address of the owner differed from the address of the property. Four single-family homes opposite, that is on the east side of Ashley, the proposed rezone parcel, were built in 2002 and rapidly, rapidly became annual rentals and usually containing a number, a minimum of four or five renters in, also in violation of the Bellingham Municipal Code that limits rentals to three or fewer unrelated persons. There are some additional rentals near the corner of Ashley and Byron. They also compound the problem of parking, noise, litter and overall deterioration. Cars, noise and trash are the order of the day. Any proposed apartment complex on the parcel, the applicant wishes to rezone, will unfortunately not attract couples or small families, given the surroundings. In fact, the further concentration of young university students will aggregate the current situation, most certainly promote the further decline in the immediate neighborhood with the addition of dozens and dozens of automobiles, increased traffic, street parking noise and other disturbances. So what I'd like to propose, I think you'll all be happy with. It's your dream. This is a perfect place for the infill toolkit. Break out the champagne, why don't we do it here? The neighborhood, I don't think will object to that. And it's perfect transitional housing, it's affordable. It could be owner-occupied. And we'd solve the problem of the crowding that's going on there and perhaps reverse the deterioration of the neighborhood into rentals. So that's my proposal for the Ashley Street property. With respect to the property across from the proposed rezone on Samish Way, which is now occupied by the church, this proposal came in on the 16th. Somebody snuck in here, hand-delivered this thing. The neighborhood has, as a neighborhood, they hardly even know that this proposal was made. Nobody's come around and talked to us. We haven't had any meetings on it, nobody's attempted to talk to the board. And now they want to piggyback this on this process without actually going through the process that everybody else has gone through. And I think for that reason, you ought to reject this and have them go through the process just like everybody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. Next up, Ron Young. Okay, go ahead, Simi.
Hi, Simi Jane, Zander Thurston, 1700 D Street, Bellingham, Washington. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the July 16th request by Pacific Harbor Holdings. This was not docketed in the same manner as the other requests before you tonight, but you've heard a little bit about it already. There is a process, as you know, for the council to docket any site-specific or non-site-specific amendment for the docket. That's the process outlined in your ordinance and you have broad discretion, as I heard Mr. Mariner say earlier tonight, to make those sorts of legislative decisions. We feel the time is ripe now to docket this request and the neighborhood will have a full opportunity to participate in the rezone process. There is neighborhood meeting required, notice will be given and the proposal will be fully vetted during the very public process, as you know. The reason why we think the time is ripe right now is, one, the staff is already looking at Area 9. And so we thought it makes sense, while staff is already reviewing that area, why not also review this docket request at the same time? Think it's more efficient for staff to do that. The other reason why it's important to move forward now is that the church, which currently exists on the property, and you'll hear from the property owner, wants to sell their property. And there is a willing buyer right now, my client, Pacific Harbor Holdings. They would like to buy the church property and convert the use of the building to an office use. Area 9 allows for offices. It's right across the street, as you saw from the earlier map. I've also included a map with my request and it's in your packet. There would be no further changes to the property that would be significant. There's sufficient parking. And the Pacific Harbor Holdings will speak to all of the benefits of the office use and the reason why that location is desirable. Currently, the property is on residential single and expanding Area 9 to include the church property would result in a rezone to commercial planned. And as I said before, that use allows for offices there. I don't know how to do that, escape? So, let's see here. This is Area 9. And this is the church property right here across the street. It's this whole lot. This is Area 8. I think that's zoned multifamily, or residential plan perhaps, but there's multifamily housing on there currently. If this property is about 1.7 acres, so the proposal is to expand this area to capture that church use. The church is a conditional use on the property within the residential single zone. So the options for the church right now are extremely limited. They can sell, they can try to sell to somebody who will tear down the church building, which in my opinion would be a waste of a building, and have residential single development there or apply for another conditional use permit and go through that process. Or as, as the Pacific Harbor Holdings has come forward with, is a fairly economically efficient use of this property would be to just keep things to status quo. We're not adding any more traffic to what's already there. We're not adding any more residences to what's already there. It's just changing what's going on inside the building. I did set forth the docketing criteria in my written submission. As you know, the proposal has to meet one or more of the criteria. And we think that there is a strong potential to stir the public interest. I identified the goals and policies of a comprehensive plan that I think are supported by this proposal, mainly related to economic development and rezone proposals that promote economic development. The current process, as I already spoke to, which the other rezone applications are going through, is something before you now. And so rather than delaying consideration at a future time, which is another consideration for docketing, we think it makes most sense to give this a chance and docket it now and let the public process play out. Obviously, there's changes, changing circumstances because the church wants to sell their land. I also went ahead and if you are going to make a decision tonight, which may or may not be possible, I went ahead and made some draft changes to the resolution that's in your packet. So if you would like to? So this is a resolution that's in your packet. It's attachment-won right now. And what I did is I just added to the resolution a couple of findings. I underline those additions just to help the council during their deliberations if you wish to docket the proposal. If there aren't any questions for me, I know that the seller and the potential buyers, my clients, would like to speak more about the proposal.
Okay. No questions. Thank you, Simi. Okay, Ron Young is up next, followed by Kate Haskell and Rodney Anderson.
Ron Young from lovely Ferndale, 2827 Dallas Drive. I'm here on, as an agent for the Samish Way Church of Christ. The executive was not able to attend tonight and I have a prepared letter that they've sent and I've passed one on to all the members through the secretary there. And then I have a couple of comments. Letter is short, it says, "Dear City Council Members, The Samish Way Church of Christ congregation submits this letter in support of extending the boundaries of the proposed comprehensive plan change for the Samish neighborhood to include our property at 801 Samish Way. Altering the current zoning from residential single to commercial would allow us to sell the property to Pacific Harbor Holdings for the purpose of establishing a psychology practice in the building. We have occupied this property as a house of worship for the past 25 years and have done our best to respect both our immediate neighbors and the greater Samish neighborhood. Based on our conversations and negotiations with the providers at Pacific Harbor Holdings, we believe the buyers would be respectful members to the neighborhood also. Our understanding is that they plan to do interior remodeling to our church building, but do not plan to make any substantial exterior changes to the building or landscaping. In addition, we are in support of their intentions to establish a long-term home for their practice, which will improve access to psychology and counseling services for residents on the south side of town. Our sense is that both our immediate neighbors and the greater neighborhood would also be in support of Pacific Harbor establishing a practice at 801 Samish Way. We are in the final stages of negotiations regarding a purchase and sale agreement and have every intention of having a binding contract in place within the next two weeks. We are hopeful to have the final contract done prior to the City of Council meeting, but time constraints have prohibited this from occurring. Please rest assured that our intentions in pursuing the zoning change are strictly in the context of our anticipated sale to Pacific Harbor Holdings. We would appreciate your support in allowing our property to be added to the 2014-2015 docket and would be more than happy to assist in this process as it goes forward." And signed by the Executive Treasurer and Registered Representative for the- And signed by the Executive Treasurer and Registered Representative for the church. And it is 1.75 acres of property. The church building occupies, and the parking occupies about 45 to maybe 48% of the property. It has been for sale. There's been numerous people look at the property, various development proposals, but financially, none of them have worked out to proceed. When Pacific Harbor Holdings came into the picture, it was like a blessing from the church body that they would maintain the church building, which was specifically architecturally designed as a church. They were not going to destroy that structure, and they were not going to develop the property any further and would keep everything as it is. And that was a very responsive thing to the church body. So I did want to pass that on, and their letter is pretty specific that it's for that purpose. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Kate Haskell.
Good evening. I'm Kate Haskell, and I live at 3276 Byglass Drive, and I'm here to speak for Pacific Harbor Psychology Practice. I've been in the business for about 25 years, 13 years practicing here in Bellingham. I'm a licensed mental health therapist. I'm a child expert, and I'm nationally board certified. I also have a long history of working with the school district. Ms. Jane has outlined the legal aspects of our request. I am here as a representative of my nine colleagues to clarify our intentions and our role in the community. Eight of the nine of us have lived and worked in the city of Bellingham for over a decade and some of us for several decades. We have strong ties to the community. In July of 2003, we opened our offices as Pacific Harbor Psychology and have maintained our organization and group for the past 11 years. We take care of clients who range from childhood to the elderly, supporting them through a wide range of difficulties that life can bring. We provide individual counseling, family counseling, and diagnostic evaluations. Recently, we've come to recognize the liabilities of our current rental arrangement. In particular, there have been significant issues with parking, proximity to public transportation, and handicapped accessibility for our patients, both elderly and disabled. We realize that owning our own building property would create a greater stability for our patients and for the future of our group. We have been searching for a property that meets our primary requirements: access to public transportation, WTA and I-5, adequate parking that is under our control and of no additional expense to our patients, easily accessible entrances for the elderly and the disabled patients that we treat, and not cost prohibitive to our group. Prior to locating the property at 801 Samish, we had been unable to identify any other properties within the city limits that meet our essential requirements. We have briefly discussed moving out to the county but feel maintaining our offices in Bellingham is important to the city, for ourselves and our clients. As many of you are aware, Bellingham has a huge shortage of psychologists and mental health counselors. Another feature of the 801 Samish Way property is the added benefit to Western Washington University. While Western maintains its own counseling center, recent budget restrictions have limited their ability to provide individual counseling to their students. They have been forced to refer to community counselors, but there are few within close proximity to the campus. Every provider in our office has received calls from worried parents and students requesting services, and our experience has been that the location and the transportation barriers we currently have are a huge impediment to students trying to seek mental health care. They currently walk to our offices. We're located down at the port of Bellingham. They ride bikes or they walk from downtown. Sometimes it takes them several hours to attend one-hour therapy appointment. We have carefully considered the impacts that the office might have on the immediate neighbors and greater Samish neighborhood. We plan to remodel the interior of the existing church building and do not plan to make any extensive changes to the property or landscaping. Our practice is quiet. We typically only see about 35 patients per day collectively. We rarely work evenings or weekends. We have informally spoken with a few of the neighbors who boarded the property. Those neighbors have communicated that they recognize that some change is inevitable and feel that our intention to utilize the building for our psychology practice would be one of the best possible outcomes for the neighborhood. Additionally, as citizens of the city, we believe that using city resources efficiently by incorporating it in Area 9 would be the way that it could work for us and the seller to do it in this next cycle. As a group with a long, stable history, we view the property at 801 Samish as a place to establish a home for our office for decades to come. We also recognize the intense need for psychology services within Bellingham and would like to continue to meet that need. My hope in sharing this is to provide a picture of who we are and the role that Pacific Harbor plays currently and has played in our community. We've all faced challenges in our life, and our group provides care during those difficult times. We play a crucial role of support. We treat people just like you, and we want you to have a place, whether it's your child or your teen, your partner or your parent, where you can come to a location that's accessible and convenient and get the care you need. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry it's been such a long night.
Thank you, Kate. Next up, Rodney Anderson, followed by George Sanders.
My name's Rodney Anderson. I live at 3309 Cedarside Court. This is my first council meeting, so longer than I expected, so I will try to be brief. I'm a family physician here in town. I've lived and worked in Bellingham for the past five years. I also happen to be married to Kara Anderson, who is one of the psychologists as a part of Pacific Harbor Psychology. But I'm here tonight not as a husband in support of my wife, more so as a physician in support of my patients. I spend every day on the front lines of providing health care to patients in this community, and one of the biggest battles that I face is access to services. There are certain services in this community, say cardiology. You need a cardiologist, I can get you in within a few days. We have an abundance of cardiologists in Watcom County. Say you need a physical therapist, that's probably a week or two, pretty easy to get you in. Heaven forbid you should need a psychologist or a mental health counselor here. We have a huge shortage in that arena, and I feel like I've done a pretty good job if I get you in within a month or two. And I see that as a huge problem because most of the referrals that I make to counselors are in a time of crisis. In fact, this is near to my heart. I spent this morning down at Harborview Medical Center watching my stepdad pass away from a hemorrhagic stroke he had last night unexpectedly. And I sat in the ICU, and I was watching my mother, and I was sort of debating, do I go to this meeting tonight or not? But as I was staring at her, seeing the crisis that was unfolding in front of her, recognizing the need that she would have in the months ahead for access to care, I felt even more burdened to be here tonight and to share this need and to speak on behalf of these patients. I think anything that this community can do to stabilize and ensure access to mental health services going forward is in the benefit of all of us. And I like the expression that nobody plans to see a psychologist or psychiatrist. That's usually not on your to-do list. But when you have that need, that need arises quickly, and if there isn't access to care, the results for that individual can be devastating. I think that altering the comprehensive plan to allow this group to move to this location, this church on Samish Way, would be in the benefit of the greater community. And I specifically see a geographic void when it comes to counseling services. Specifically, there are no large psychology practices on the south side of town. There's some individual providers down in Fairhaven. There's another large group at the Bellwether. There's a large group off Mount Baker Highway. There's a large group near Bellingham High School, but there's nothing on the south side and specifically in the Seehome Village and Samish neighborhood. And for those clients or those patients of mine, clients of these practices that don't have access to transportation, that's a huge issue. If you can't get there, you will not seek services and you will not get the care that you need at that point in time. I also want to make a comment, piggybacking on what Kate said about proximity to Western Washington University. We all remember college, right? Freedom, independence, fairly poor decision-making, and exorbitantly high degree of emotional turmoil during that short stint of life. And so the needs for mental health counselors, for psychologists, for those students is disproportionately high during that stage in life. And as somebody who works with a lot of college kids, I appreciate that the counseling center up there at Western does the best they can, but they're short on resources. And having a psychology practice that is close to the campus is a benefit to that student body, to that university, and to this community as a whole. So for those reasons outlined, I wholeheartedly support the process of docketing this for the next cycle. I think it would be a benefit to the Samish neighborhood residents, to the students of Western, and to the greater Bellingham community. And I'm not privy to the legal pieces of how these applications are supposed to go in, but my perspective as a citizen, as a physician, as somebody who's trying to take care of this community is that when an opportunity arises to do something that is clearly beneficial to the community as a whole, we all, as members of this community, have an obligation to try to make that happen. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Rodney. George Sanders.
City council members, Mayor Linville, Planning Department, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Could we go to the, there, the Ashley property that's just above the Park and Ride that is proposed for rezone? I do not support that docketing at this time. It's not quite time for that because we haven't heard the guarantee that we won't be here fighting another university ridge. We fought a grossly misplanned and mal-proposed student housing proposal in 2004 that would have absolutely destroyed that neighborhood. And the traffic on Ashley and Byron and consolidation is, there are just numerous choke points, and the neighborhood does not need that density. You're right at the edge of a totally single-family neighborhood, and I don't want to see a mega apartment building. It would be fine if we could extend some more condominiums coming down Ashley or duplexes or smaller apartment units there, just as Dick Conneboy states that this is, this could be the poster child for responsible development. But the university ridge, I spent money to fund the NGO, the Responsible Development, to hire the lawyer to make our case for the hearing examiner, and at that point, I felt like I had been denied representative government. And it was the planning department, and it wasn't the city council. These are my elected representatives. So at this point, I'm asking my elected representatives to take a pause and let's make sure that we get the right density of, that we don't get student housing, we don't get houses built with no master bedroom that can't be used for anything else. And that's what we've got at Byron, and it's right across the woods and right across the street from me. So that is, I don't feel protected in this process, and I'm asking the city council to take a pause. I noticed that you, as lawmakers, can put conditions, and I would love to hear a motion tonight to put a condition that there is no mega student housing and no ultra-dense housing put on this postage stamp property. So I am quite concerned at this point. I think we can move together to make this a transition from our neighborhood to the commercial and the developed portion towards Lincoln Street. But I don't want to be here and at the planning commission next year or in two years later fighting another university ridge that would not be becoming of our fair city. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Okay, we've got John McGarrett here, but I believe he was trying to sign up for a different hearing, and I don't see him. So John McGarrett, are you out there?
No, he's not.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item?
Good evening. I wasn't really expecting to speak tonight, but after listening to what everybody has said, I felt like I needed to say something about Area 9.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, I'm Steve Abel.
Thank you.
I live at 102134th Street, which is just a short distance from Area 9. I am so reluctant to see that non-retail designation disappear. I think that opens the door to some things that would not be a pleasant addition to the Samish neighborhood, and I'm concerned about what may happen to that portion of Samish Way if that non-retail designation disappears. So I'd really like you to keep that. As far as the property off the street, on the other side of the street, I don't have any problem with what Pacific Partners wants to do with the church building. I think that would be fine. But here's the thing, they don't need commercial plans to do that. You can keep the non-retail designation for that property also, and they can do exactly what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Last call. Okay, and that's it.
Hi, I'm Barbara Besire, and we live directly across, well, we live next to where the psychology practice would be, and we feel that that would be a good use of that property. I'm not sure about what the last gentleman said about whether it needs to be changed, the zoning needs to be changed for that or not. That would be nice if it could be left as it is. What we're most concerned about is the one across the street that is wanting the property, I'm not sure which is which up there, that wants a piece of the Elks property included in it. And we're most concerned about the changing of the non-retail, and some of the possibilities of what the use would be were mentioned. Some of those sounded very unappealing to me, considering this is a residential neighborhood. And so I'd like, if the zoning is changed and there could be certain restrictions on it, I would like to, I would like to see that happen. I also understand there was a meeting at some point that we were not aware of, and we're the most closely involved in what happened there, I would say. So I don't know what happened with that, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, leaving the written record open. And I'll turn it back over to council members. Terry.
Got a question regarding the church's request. What is their property currently zoned, and does it require the change to have a psychology practice there?
Yes, it's currently zoned residential single.
Oh, it's residential single, okay.
Yes, and staff has done the research to confirm that it does need a rezone to be able to have that type of use there.
And just for people in the audience, this process of docketing, if we vote to docket properties, that just sets the process, and it's not approving a zoning change, it's not approving anything at this point other than it allows staff to study it and bring it back to us at some other point to decide if we're going to approve those zoning. Is that correct?
Correct. Right, this process establishes the list of comprehensive plan amendments, and then the applicants have 30 days in which to submit the comprehensive plan amendment application as well as the rezone application.
So when the applicant states that we have no intention of doing retail and we will put that, you know, gladly put that, you know, in whatever our plan, if this is docketed and that's what the applicants are saying, can that, when it comes back before us, can that be part of that? Because if they're willing to say that and the neighbors have an objection, is that...
Can we condition it? Right, at the rezone point.
If they're willing to do that, is that possible then to condition it that way? To take them at their word that this is really what they want to do?
Yes, at the rezone portion where we've done our analysis, you know, we can identify those types of issues.
Okay, that's good to hear that they're willing to do that, and if they're willing to do it, you know, and if we docket it, I can't see why we wouldn't want to... know, and if we docket it, I can't see why we wouldn't want to take them at their word because otherwise you can say whatever you want, but then, you know, bill will, after the fact.
Michael.
I'm a little bit bothered. I'm seeing a fundamental misunderstanding of what it is we're doing and the applicants, they keep talking about the specific things they want to do. We don't want to do retail, we want to do a psychology clinic. Zoning doesn't get down to that level. If we open up to commercial planned, that means they can do anything they want that fits in there. That doesn't mean they put it in a psychology clinic. So I mean, I, you know, most of those arguments about mental health, I think they're entirely irrelevant. The only question before us here is these current zoning, for some reason, in need of improvement or change in order to advance the comprehensive plan or achieve a public goal. And it's not about mental health because we're not opening a door just to a mental health clinic, we're opening it to commercial plans. So I'm not convinced that there's a changed circumstance. Wanting to sell the property is not a changed circumstance. I need to hear better arguments as to what circumstance changed. You know, the fact that the church wants to move or the fact that a clinic can't find a good access for their clients, that's not a change in circumstance of the sort that we're required to have to change zoning. So I don't think, based on those arguments, I've heard a reason to add them to the docket. I, I think the other arguments make more sense to me. The auto-centered commercial, it does seem like an outmoded idea that does not fit with the selling of the area. I see a change in circumstance. I think it's appropriate to go forward with the docketing. I have shared some of the concerns of the neighborhood that there can be a bad project that might go forward in that. At the, at the final decision stage, I will want to see barriers put up against that. But at this point, I'm willing to let it go forward because I do think there's been changes in circumstances in both of these properties. But I'm, I don't, I don't see any reasonable argument for the change in circumstance of this property. Like I said, wanting to have a clinic and wanting to sell your church, those aren't changes in circumstance, not that we're talking about. Nothing has changed in the neighborhood, you know?
What were, well, staff recommended passing this. What were the changed, or what were the criteria for docketing that staff felt were met?
With respect to the which property?
This one Michael's talking about.
Church property?
He didn't recommend that.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, we didn't review that.
Terry, sorry.
Yeah, I, you know, I understand what, what you're saying, Michael, because I have, I have the mixed feelings on the church one in the fact that it didn't come forward for, so that neighbors and others could comment on it until, like the other two, they're out here, it was notice that we're going to have a public hearing to come forward and comment on it. I talked to people who just found out about it and they're right next to it and they hadn't even heard about it until the last day or so. And so it really hasn't given, even though, if that's what they're going to use it for, I, I agree, it could be a really good thing, but as Michael said, you can put it out there and change it and then all of a sudden say, oh, we decided we want to do something else. So I, I have real mixed feelings about whether we should do anything with that one because they didn't follow the, didn't come through the process. It didn't give notice to the neighbors to really be able to comment on that. If it came through the regular one, you know, the regular process, I would be more inclined to say less docketed, but the...
Gene?
But if we do docket it, they will get that chance, right? Am I misre... Yeah, I want to tell you something. Let's be honest about it. This docketing situation seems to get worse and worse every year and I really don't know what the problem is because we sit up here and we go over this stuff and then when we get down to the end, we're confusing ourselves and when we docket it, it gets a full hearing and we go over each and every issue before. Now, if the, if the church or the people that want to come into the church say they will agree to a certain zoning, then why wouldn't we docket it and hold them to that? And we can stipulate that when we make the decision. I don't want to just off the hand say no because it's possible to do something else, but we're the ones that have the final say. If we don't want them to become a different use, then we can do that. So I, I don't have a problem with docketing all three of them.
I actually don't either and I think serves the public interest to consider the proposal in this docket cycle is one of the, is the third criteria. And given the information and the timeliness of the opportunity, I'm interested in it and I feel fine about a meeting with that criteria. Thank you.
I want to say I concur to everything that you just said. I really feel as though, obviously you can't plan these sort of things. Sometimes the opportunity presents itself and I think if it is an opportunity for us to do something that is betterment for our community in a service that we are very much lacking, I, I do support that going forward.
Jack and then Michael.
To me, I guess, first of all, the church property, I, I feel, I'm a little conflicted with it as well, as far as the, the process of it. I appreciate the, I appreciate the fact that it, you know, the building would be preserved and that, you know, it probably is a better fit versus being down on Bellwether. I am a little concerned that there really isn't very good transit to that, to that particular location. I mean, you can get to the Park and Ride, but that's, you know, maybe what, half mile, three quarters of a mile away.
There's a route up.
What's that?
Sorry, there's a route.
Well, it's what, one hour, one hour bus?
I don't know.
It's, yeah, it's not very frequent, I don't believe. You know, trying to come up with a criteria, the other one that I would come up with, but it would also be somewhat of a condition too, is, is whether or not, is the number two criteria, which is, does it serve in the public interest? And to me, serves in the public interest to the comp plan if we are actually reusing a building and repurposing a building versus tearing it down and building, you know, as Michael's concerned about, something that's commercial planned, which could be anything. And, you know, Terry, you were suggesting maybe putting conditions on it. You know, to me, the condition would be if the building footprint or the, the building has any sort of major exterior renovations that, that it would be, I don't know, conditional use permit or some, some other mechanism that you would work through or condition as part of the, the docketing process. I understand the fact that we try to simplify, we're trying to simplify our, our subareas and we're trying to not put too many conditions on. This is one where, you know, if, if I was trying to go with what Michael's talking about, which is really stated letter of the law, we wouldn't be doing this at all and we would lose this as an opportunity. But to have the opportunity and not have it fail in the future and then be converted into something where, where everybody's unhappy except for the owner, that would be, that would be unfortunate. To the extent of, of Area 9, to me, it seems like, I don't know, you know, we, we're talking about putting office space in, in our urban villages, you know, that if we, if we put offices there, is that really, is that really supporting the whole concept of our comp plan of, of trying to densify our urban uses? Because to me, this seems like it's commercial leapfrogging if we're, if we're putting office space out, further out. You know, you could justify it if you had a psychiatric office on the other side of the street, but I don't know. To me, it seems like it's a little bit of a leapfrog. I can support docketing it just to have the discussion and I know that that's what we're talking about. And the same thing on the, the Ashley Street site is that there is concerns about the fact that there is some single-family residences in the neighborhood and you don't want to have too much in the way of, you know, the university ridge issues. I don't know whether or not through the, through the analysts or, you know, analyzing this property, whether or not there would be an FAR cap to, to that parcel or not, you know, to, or we're really just talking about just zoning it and calling it good and whatever they can go and squeeze into the property, they can squeeze in?
No, I think FAR is one of the issues that we would address in the process, as are the, the appropriate uses and the full range of issues that we normally look at when we're talking about a rezone.
And I think, and so the, the docketing and having the neighborhood be able to, to work with the applicant to deal with FAR and any other types of issues, I think that's very appropriate, so.
So do we and that's why we recommended that it be docketed.
Yeah. So at, at least to put something on the floor, I guess I would, I would recommend, or I would move to, to docket actually all three of these. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Michael.
I should, we support these two, the Area 9 and Area 1, I think it is, or 1A, I can't remember, because I think the, the non-retail qualifier is outmoded and I think the auto qualifier is outmoded. But I want to remind everyone, this is not a project-level description. If someone says, oh, we want to do this kind of office, we want to do this kind of building, that's not the decision we're making. We are creating a zone, which is a range of possibilities with no guarantee whatsoever what's going to be inside that range. Zoning shouldn't be that restrictive. So we should not be talking about whether the building is reused, we should not be talking about meeting mental health needs. I, I really do think that, I don't mind the, I don't mind public bringing those up, but I really do mind us considering those sorts of things because they really are irrelevant. I, I really do think they are. However, I will say, Kathy, you raised a really good point. I looked at, back at, at B3, the serves public interest to consider proposal docketing in this docket cycle. The fact that a property is across the street, I think now might actually be an opportune time to look at it, but not because I want to meet the mental health need or preserve the church or the church wants to sell it. I, I don't think those are appropriate considerations, but I do think this is an appropriate time. So it does meet that criteria and so I will support the motion.
Mayor, did you want to say something? It's hard to get a word in inchwise around here, I know.
I just think that the docketing process allows all these conversations to happen and we should be looking at the docketing criteria. So I'm glad, Michael, you found a criteria that would meet adding all three projects and that doesn't mean that you're obligated to do anything at the end of the docketing. That just means that you have an opportunity to hear all the information and have a public process. So I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay. Jack moved that we docket all three proposals. We do have a resolution and Gene seconded. So what's the point of process here? Do we need to amend this resolution? We have a couple of recommended amendments to the resolution in front of us, which I could read into the record if we wanted to add.
Yeah, so the resolution is in your packet on page 207, everybody there. So what it comes down to is that it says down the bottom of the page, therefore be it resolved by the City Council, two propose, two proposals listed in attachment 1A are hereby docketed and it lists the two proposals. You could just amend this resolution to say three and add the church property to the list in attachment 1A and I think that would do it.
Michael?
Ms. Jane suggests that we might actually amend the other portions. I'm wondering if, whether or not you or Alan has an opinion about whether or not that would be important to amend the recitals?
There are three, yes, Jack.
I think it might be important to allow staff to, given, given the nature of this and it's a little bit more complicated, we should let staff have the necessary time before we actually vote on this.
Okay.
So maybe what I'll do, I'll with, just to make it easier, I'll withdraw my motion and encourage us to make the motion again on August 4th. Oh, no, I'll, I'll make a different motion, is to direct staff to prepare a resolution that would include all three.
Thank you.
Second.
Can we clarify one?
Yes, certainly. Go ahead.
Does, does your motion include the sliver of the property attached to Area 9 there?
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Gene?
Yeah, we'll docket a ham sandwich tonight. I mean, that's just something. Yeah, go ahead.
I think that's my favorite thing you've ever said. That's a high bar, too. Okay, so the original motion was rescinded and the new motion from Jack, seconded by Steve, Gene?
I could call Tom, Steve, that's all right.
I don't know. Okay, is to, direct staff to prepare a motion to include all three proposals, including the sliver portion of that proposal Greg just referenced.
In the, to be a little more specific, how should we refer to that sliver of property? The Elks property or?
Yes, it is 3,929 square foot parcel home by, north of the Area 9. It's part of Area 9, but it wasn't.
Okay, I think, I think we've got it. Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none. All those in favor directing staff to prepare this motion to include all three proposals, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? Oh, I said a motion, I meant a resolution, yeah. To prepare a resolution. I thought I was getting away with something there, doing it right first time. Okay, thank you very much. That is the end of our second public hearing item. We have a third and final public hearing this evening. Okay. Everybody, everybody ready? Okay. Consideration of the renewal of an emergency ordinance establishing interim zoning for the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and in collective gardens. On June 23rd, 2014, the City Council renewed an emergency ordinance and interim zoning regarding land use regulations related to the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and in collective gardens. RCW 3670A.390 authorizes the City Council to adopt interim zoning on an emergency basis, provided a public hearing is held within at least 60 days of adoption. The purpose of this hearing is to take public comment regarding the renewal of the interim zoning, after which the council may rescind, modify, or affirm the adopted ordinance. The six-month interim zoning ordinance will allow the city to preserve the status quo while it develops zoning and land use regulations related to the cultivation of medical marijuana. Alan.
Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney, so I'll be very brief. We're conducting, council extended the emergency interim zoning ordinance on June 23rd. We're required by state law to have this public hearing this evening. And at the conclusion of the hearing, you can make, you can leave that ordinance, that emergency ordinance in place, you can rescind it or you can modify it and staff is recommending that you leave it in place until the city completes its final plans for medical marijuana. And just the last thing I want to say is that this is about medical marijuana, not recreational marijuana. With that, Kurt, do you have anything else to add?
Okay.
That's it.
So I still need to open and close the public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing. Any public comment on this ordinance, emergency ordinance? Seeing none. I'm closing the public hearing on this item and referring back to council.
Move approval of the ordinance. What's that? Yeah, it's, it's already been done.
By direction to take no action.
So, okay, so we don't, we're not requiring any motion if we don't want...
No, if you're going to leave the emergency ordinance in place, it requires no action by council.
Okay, would anybody like to take any action? Seeing none. There is no action. And that item is included, okay. Thank you. And that item is included, okay, thank you. That was a late night for Kurt. Thank you. Okay. That was the end of our public hearings, we're going to move into public comment, thank you, Jean, yes. I knew there was someone I was overlooking. Okay, we have a few folks who signed up for public comment that we didn't get to during the 15-minute public comment period. Yeah, well, I'm going to call these names, just to be fair, even though there are a handful of people here. Hank Blodowski, Alex McLean, Ken Holmes, and Michael Jacobson. Come on up, Ken. Hung in there quite a while with us.
I would like to thank Kathy Lehman, the Chair, for at least acknowledging my email and calling me this morning, and Terry for a couple of comments in the hall. Thank you. Before I left the house, my wife says, don't get yourself arrested. And I asked her, what, what would they do to me? Take my library card? Or, or maybe my senior bus pass? You know? Now, apparently, the council, I watched the council meeting once I got home two weeks ago, and I was somewhat affronted by a couple of the things that were said. At no time, if you watch the tape, will you see that I rose up and spoke at somebody in a bad tone? I did not, well, Terry, I guess you could when I said I wasn't going to apologize. I maintain that position. I didn't raise a hand, I didn't glare at anybody, I didn't swear at anybody, I didn't cuss anybody out. You know, I didn't approach anybody, I didn't threaten anybody verbally or physically. I think if it is a kerfluffle of sorts, but I'm not too worried that it was a dire affront to the sensibilities of the council. And some of the comments that came my way were affronting to me. One individual stood up and called me a name. He did not get wrapped on the knuckles. Second person stands up and trash talks to me. Well, he did get somewhat of a reprimand. He apologized to the Chair, but I'm the one that was offended. I don't mind a point-counterpoint with anybody on anything. But I don't think calling me names or trash talking is really appropriate. One thing I do have to point out, correct the record, it was stated that the public comment period was an hour and a half. It was right a little bit, shade over 50 minutes. Now, maybe that's, for all of us unwashed in the community, too much to ask. But I think we should be able to speak. And I'll save the rest for you next time.
Thank you, Ken.
Oh, one thing I would point out, in Athens or in Rome, a person could turn their back on somebody they disagreed with. So I did raise my finger, but only for emphasis, no threat.
Thank you, Ken. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council and public comment this evening? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public comment period for a second time and move into committee work of the council that we started this afternoon. Hours and hours ago. With Public Works, Public Safety. Terry Bornham, the Chair?
Yes.
Yes, Terry Bornham, the Chair.
Thank you, Kathy. We had one item before the committee today. It was a street overlay bid award, the ES 495 Street Overlay Bid Award. The 2014 overlay project includes Hawthorne, 14th Street, Kellogg, Electric Avenue, as well as the intersection of James and Illinois Streets. Bids were open on July 10th, 2014, at 11:00 a.m. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was $1,428,935.94, inclusive of any sales tax by the Colacultio, Colacultio Brothers Construction. The engineer's estimate was for $1,647,650, inclusive of any sales tax. So we come in, in under the bid, which is always good. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please, oh.
I don't know if it's appropriate now, but there was a question to staff earlier at committee meeting about if any of these overlaid streets would have any bicycle facilities added, so I have that information, if you'd like me to share that.
Certainly, if you came back at this late at night to tell us that.
I'll be very brief, I'll be very brief. So, I apologize for the map, it's not as clear as I'd like it to be, but down at the bottom of the map, Hawthorne Street, Fieldstone to 12th Street, we will be adding some markings. We don't have the width there to put in a dedicated bicycle lane, but we will be adding some of the shared markings that we have started to use a little bit more regularly and have received some positive feedback there. On 14th Street, from South Garden to Bennett, again, we'll be adding shared lane markings. They'll be installed from 14th, from Boulevard, on 14th from Boulevard to Harris, so that's a little bit beyond the scope of our resurfacing, so we're going to extend that down with some additional shared markings. Electric, which was the discussion this morning, or this afternoon, because we don't have sidewalk, and that was part of Jack's question, we'll be adding curb gutter and sidewalk, and we won't with this project, that paved shoulder area, while it'll be much nicer for cyclists, because you'll have a smooth surface, and I ride that quite a bit, it'll be a big improvement, we also will still have pedestrian activity there, so we won't actually sign it and designate it as a bicycle lane, and that's because there'll be pedestrians walking in it. It will, though, be a much improved shoulder, and is an area that is scheduled for bike lane at some time in the future when we put sidewalk in, and that's down the road a ways. And then unfortunately, on Kellogg, we won't be putting any bicycle improvements in, we just don't have the width there. So, not on all of them, but on most of them, we are putting some type of bicycle improvement in.
Jack?
So are you putting fog lines then on electric?
We will, yeah. Yeah, so it will, it will look a lot like a bike lane, it just won't be signed and marked as a designated bicycle lane, and again, that's because it's also the area designated for pedestrians because of the lack of a sidewalk.
And so you're making the decisions on 14th and Hawthorne about putting sharrows in, just, you're anticipating that the Bike Master Plan policies about sharrows are, are going to move forward with the council?
We are. We've put them in, as you know, on Indian Street, and then we put them more recently in as the approach to the Warf Street Roundabout, and while I think everybody agrees you'd rather have dedicated bike facilities, whether it's a bike lane, or a buffered bike lane, or whatever it might be, the feedback that we've received is that it's better than if nothing was there at all. So we are moving forward, it is recommended in the Bicycle Master Plan that you'll see on August 11th, so it's consistent with the recommendations. However, you're right, we recognize that's not been approved yet.
Okay, thank you very much, Ted. Okay, so we had a motion and a second. To recommend this bid award. Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm. The ES 495 Street Overlay Bid Award. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Terry. Okay, moving into committee, the whole, we had a number of items this afternoon. The first was discussion of an opportunity to create a liaison position with the Bellingham-Watcom County Chamber of Commerce and Industry Board of Directors. Jack, well, let's see, we had a motion to recommend approval that council will appoint the liaison, and that passed 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion of that item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 6-0 with Terry out of the room. And then, having established that we do want to have a liaison position with the Chamber, we moved that Michael Lillquist be named the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, and that passed 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion of that item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 6-0 with Terry Bornham and out of the room. The third, sorry, second item was authorization for the city to continue with Army Street Property Owners Memorandum Agreement process, and we recommended approval, 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion of this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of authorizing the continuation of the Army Street Property Owners Memorandum of Agreement process, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 6-0 with Terry Bornham and out of the room. Third item this afternoon was discussion of a comment letter regarding rail impacts of proposed Gateway Pacific Terminal, of the proposed Gateway Pacific Terminal. And after discussion, we recommended approval of the letter with Councilmember Lillquist's written amendments to the third paragraph. And that was recommended 7-0, and I so move. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion of this letter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, then, we had a second motion on the letter inviting the mayor to sign it as amended, and that was, that passed 7-0 in committee, and I so move. Who seconded?
Jean.
Jean, sorry, okay. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Next item, we had a discussion of public access television, and what to do with the proposal from staff, and we'll get to that item here. Okay, and after discussion, we move to recommend approval of the resolution with the following change. If content supply exists, the city shall set aside an average of six hours per week for public access with days to be determined. And that motion passed as amended, 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. And then in support of that resolution, there was an ordinance appropriating funds from the estimated ending restricted reserve in the Public Education and Government Access Television Fund to increase one part-time position in the Information Technology Services Department to full-time, and we recommended approval, 7-0 in committee, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion of the ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We had another, two items that were information-only in committee the whole this afternoon. One was a review of financial guidelines and the Facility Task Force recommendations. It was the first in, I think, a series of a couple of financial presentations we'll be receiving over the next few months as we prepare for the biennial budget cycle. And then we also had an update on the Lake Watcom watershed total maximum daily load phosphorus reduction targets, including some proposed timelines that are being looked at by the Joint Policy Group, and funding discussions that are occurring in that group, and what'll be coming up on the horizon for us in terms of decisions to make about how to plan and how to fund for our responsibilities with Lake Watcom. And that ends the items we had in committee. We have two sets of minutes to approve this evening, whoops, am I in the right place here? Yes, approval of minutes, we have two sets to approve this evening, one from June 23rd and one from July 7th.
Move approval of both sets of minutes?
Second. Are you going to abstain on one of them?
Nope. I said the, yeah.
I'm going to abstain for the 23rd, because I wasn't here, I didn't watch the whole meeting.
Should we separate the mouths?
Yeah, we should.
Okay, okay, so the first.
Yeah, modify my motion to move the minutes on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Roxanne seconded Michael's motion for approving minutes from June 23rd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes passed 6-0 with Jean abstaining. There's one more set of minutes to approve. Michael?
Move approval of the July 7th meeting minutes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, that was Michael and Jean. I was not at the 7th meeting, but I watched on TV, and I can approve minutes that I wasn't at, just for the record, so I will be voting on them. All those in favor of the July 7th meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes passed 7-0 from July 7th. Any old or new business for this evening? Terry, and then Pinky?
Yeah, I'm going to bring up one issue, simply because I see the file it's set through this whole meeting and discuss, and I want to just bring up, I know it's late, and we're not, I'm not going to ask for any approval now, but I want to see if there is any interest or willingness to consider the Veterans for Peace Resolution at our next meeting. I would be willing to bring it forward, but I want, before I do, I want to see if there's interest in that discussion, okay?
I see a thumbs up and a couple of head nods.
So, we'll put something together to bring forward on our next meeting about that discussion. I know it's a very sensitive issue, and I know, but, thank you, ladies. We need people to speak out on tough issues.
Thank you, Terry. Any other older new business for this evening? Pinky?
I just wanted to let everyone know that we have entered the third phase of the Georgetown Prize, which is the contest for residential and municipal energy use. The city completed the application, which had to be done by the end of June. It has been accepted and will be reviewed, and we will know by November 1st whether or not we will be considered as a semifinalist for the Georgetown Prize, so I'm just excited that we're moving along so well.
Yes, very cool, thank you, Pinky. You better be a finalist. Okay, I just want to bring up a quick item Jack had asked this afternoon. We thought we were going to have a report from the police chief on fireworks today, but that will occur on August 4th, Brian said, so that's the next meeting. We got a couple inquiries, so if folks are interested, August 4th, we'll hear about the fireworks ban and how it went this year, our first year. Okay, any other older new business? Seeing none. Okay, I'll report out from our executive session this afternoon, we had seven items. The first The first was litigation Nash versus the City of Bellingham at Dahle. Staff provided an update on a litigation matter. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with the following terms: dismissal of the lawsuit and resolution of all claims related thereto for the payment of $17,500 to the plaintiff.
I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Second item was litigation Newland versus Sucey et Dahle. Staff provided information on a litigation matter. Direction was given, no action taken. Third item was potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. Direction was given, no action taken. Fourth was a personnel matter. Staff provided information on a personnel matter. No direction was given, no action taken. Fifth, potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. Direction was given, no action taken. Sixth, potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. Direction was given, no action taken. And seven, potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. Direction was given, no action was taken. And that is the end of the executive session report. Which brings us to the mayor's report.
I'll be quick. National Night Out is Tuesday, August 5th. The Downtown Partnership is hosting an event at Maritime Heritage Park. I'm going to be going. You're all invited to go, and the community is invited to go to that event.
What time does it start?
4:30, I think. I'm going.
I think that's when I'm going.
Starts pretty early. I think it's 4:30 to 7:30. August 5th, it's a Tuesday.
And the city is a partner in the event, so that'd be great if you could come.
It's a picnic, isn't it?
Uh-huh.
Oh, there'll be food trucks and things. It'll be a blast.
Things, and it's for...
With fireworks?
Mostly for downtown. It's for downtown, trying to get downtown residents there. There'll be some other activities as part of the efforts to reprogram Maritime Heritage Park. The Emergency Coordination Center was opened last week. Michael was there. I appreciate you coming, Michael. There were approximately 200 people there. It was very well-attended, very positive, kind of upbeat. I guess, for me, it was a physical manifestation of the cooperation that's going on between the port, the city, the commissioners and fire districts, the community, and then we did get private money from the two refineries. Well, some private money, some... Is it me? I can back up.
I think it's you.
Base members out of line.
Oh, you're on.
Having some microphone issues.
Okay, is it working now?
Yeah, you're great.
Yeah, it was bothering me, too. Anyway, it was a good event, and I was really appreciative of the cooperation we've had to do that. And it puts a building that was supposed to be emergency management building back into use, and it really improves our ability to respond to the natural disasters that could happen in our community, which we know we don't want to happen, but if they do, we're really prepared. I have appointments. Two need your approval. The first does not. David Laws to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board is just information only. Brett Walker and Dunham Gooding to the Bellingham-Watcom Public Facilities District need your approval.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0.
I had written a letter to the PDA Board saying that I would not be making any more appointments to the board until September. There is... Has been a resignation, so there's no longer a quorum. And since Ken Hertz was already on the board, I had a nice, long conversation with him, and so I am asking the council to reappoint Ken to the PDA Board, so that they will have a quorum to do their business.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda?
Second.
Gene moved approval really quietly, under his breath. And Roxanne seconded. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda passes 7-0. Final consideration of ordinances.
Okay, we just have one tonight. Agenda Bill 20484, an ordinance relating to the 2014 budget, increasing the salary for the Planning Community Development Director position, where no additional appropriation is required.
Move third and final.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Excuse me?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Gene Knutson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes 7-0.
Okay, and there was just the one item?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, we are adjourned.